Good evening. The December 16, 2019, meeting of the Anarundel County Council is now in session. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Please bow. God have power and might, wisdom and justice through you. Authority is rightly administered. Laws are enacted and judgment is decreed. Assist with your spirit of counsel and fortitude with this counsel that we may always seek the ways of righteousness, justice, and mercy. Grant that we may be enabled by your powerful protection to lead our county with honesty and integrity. We ask this in your name. Amen.
And now, Troop 160 from Glen Burnie will join us in the pledge.
Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of its citizens, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, please read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chairman of the Ethics Commission has asked that those present review the Ethics Commission information in the foyer of these chambers. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, speakers should contact the Ethics Commission in the Heritage Office Complex on Reva Road.
Thank you. And Mr. Volkey, I believe, has a citation to present.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm actually going to ask if Jada Keimer and her family and Ms. O'Boyle, who's here from Pasadena Elementary School, can all come up and meet me in the front. Come on up here. I have to stand close to the microphone, otherwise they don't hear us at home. All right. So I have with me Jada Keimer, who is now a third grader at Pasadena Elementary School in District 3, and she did a fantastic piece of art. So we're joined here by Mom and Dad and Grandmom, and also Ms. O'Boyle, who was her art teacher last year. Are you still this year? Still this year, her art teacher. So I wanted to turn this around. This is what she called "Family Portrait," and we've got a picture of the American flag and then a picture of her family here. You can hold that, Jada, if you want, because you did such a good job on it. So this is going to be hung up here in the Arundel Center and displayed. The county, every year, we go around and we pick some of the best pieces of art that have been done by our elementary school students and have them here in the Arundel Center. And so this is the representative from District 3. So thank you very much.
Thank you.[191.12][191.12](Laughter).
And this is a citation for you, Jada, and it says, "Being selected as..." It's in recognition of being selected as a distinguished student artist. Your artistic contribution to the halls of the Arundel Center, the seat of Anarundel County, and to the community is greatly appreciated. We are proud to have your talent and artwork on display for all to see and hope you continue to share your talent with the world." Congratulations.[216.84][216.84](Applause). Do you want to get a picture? We got everybody with it? Yeah. Maybe you stand in the front, so we make sure we get you.
Great job.[232.12][232.12](Applause).
All opportunities for the public to testify guarantee individuals each have two minutes to speak. Please remember to state your name and address for the record before you begin. There is a timer directly in front of you, and it will chime when your time is up. I will move on to the next speaker on the list in order to keep the meeting going, as well as be fair to everyone who wants to speak. Please be respectful when your time has ended and while others are speaking. Additional written testimony is always accepted when you testify and/or via email or mail. We will now invite members of the audience who signed up before the meeting to address the council briefly on any subject not included on the printed agenda. Remarks will be limited, again, to two minutes. Will the following persons please come up to the table and take a seat and state your name and address for the record? Mr. Philip Atetto and Mr. Arthur Holt. And Mr. Patrick Enright. Oh, excuse me, Mr. Patrick Enright. You're right at the top. Excuse me.
Good evening, Madam Chair. My name is Patrick Enright, and good evening also, by the way, to the members of the council and ladies of the staff. My name is Patrick Enright. I reside at 2052 Huntwood Drive in Gambrels. I'm here tonight to recommend a charter amendment to the Anarundel County Charter. It concerns the passage recently of the County Human Relations Commission. It already went through two tiers now of protection, as I see it. The first tier is to put it under an executive order, which was done in September 2017 by former County Executive Steve Schu. County Executive Pittman then recommended that it be codified in the Anarundel County Code, which is the second level of survival. And the third level is in the charter, as I'm recommending to the council to create a charter amendment to embed that in there, to protect it, because I think, along with a lot of other people, that this commission is really, really important, and its survival should be ensured. And therefore, I'm done. I have a handout for you that states my position, and I yield.
Thank you.
1800 Poplar Avenue in Appleton, Maryland. Hello again, friends. Congratulations on passing a Comprehensive Forest Conservation Act last month. Now that the bill is passed, perhaps you can now find a minute to add your voices to the growing national outcry among local elected bodies to push Congress to pass a Medicare-for-all, single-payer bill. As I stated last time I was here, the organization I work for was founded with the goal of giving... during the Iraq War, of giving Congressional Democrats a spine. In that same thread, I have to point out that Councilwoman Pickard, you're quoted in the Capitol saying you cleared your calendar for the forum when, I believe it was racial justice or subconscious bias, last month. That's all well and good, but if you're unwilling to use your position of power to take action to help black people, which single payer immensely would, then what good is all that knowledge? And Councilman Pruski, I think it's important for you to understand what your tacit support of our current healthcare system is endorsing. You're supporting a system that's still the number-one cause of bankruptcies nationwide. Next year, ACA Individual Deductibles, individual deductibles will be $8,000 and $16,000 for a family. You think that's affordable? Additionally, there are $35,000 preventable deaths a year from things like rationing of medications like insulin, which is quadrupled in price over the last 15 years for no reason other than greed, not to mention the suffering of those too scared to seek achievement because of the cost. I encourage all of you to check out the responses to the Twitter account called AllOnMedicare's pinned tweet that asks, "When did you become radicalized by the U.S. healthcare non-system?" The stories are horrifying. To be clear, though, this isn't a partisan issue. There's a strong conservative case for single payer, which I'll get to next council meeting. In the meantime, could any of you commit to getting the county's cost for healthcare for all of its employees? They seem to be quite elusive and difficult to find, probably because we would all be flabbergasted at the cost, which wouldn't even include the out-of-pocket costs for employees, which can be crippling. Clearly, there's much more to discuss, so I'd like to invite everyone here to our Coalition's Medicare-for-all forum on Sunday, January 26, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the Stanton Senators' a few short blocks from here. We'll have experts speak on what single pair is and is not, how it works, as well as Q&amp;A to answer people's questions and concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Atetto.
Encourage you to come. Hope I've given you something to think on. Thank you for your time, and I'll see you soon.
Thank you. Mr. Holt.
Yes. Thank you. Hi. Arthur Holt. My address is 8 Fisk Circle in Appleton, Maryland. I too am here to ask you to continue considering forming a county resolution in support of the Medicare-for-all bill in Congress now, H.R. 1384. And what that would do, that would just indicate that the county would benefit from the passing of a Medicare-for-all bill. And when I was... My wife and I talked about it a lot with people, with different people, and also with legislators, and what dropped in was the issue of healthcare as a human right. Now, is healthcare a human right? And it seems like a very foreign concept when you think of it at first, where healthcare... I mean, what is healthcare? How long has healthcare been in existence? And so what happened is that I sort of went back in my head 700 years and thought, well, right here, 700 years ago, what would it look like when someone got sick or got a chronic illness? And so I looked up quickly something from NIH, and I'm just going to read the last paragraph Traditional indigenous systems of care provide a blueprint to model new healing strategies that have the potential to extend health promotion beyond the individual to the collective, beyond the individual to the collective. In Native American culture, there is a saying that we are all related. All things live in relationship to one another. Living in harmony with the earth and our environs has a meaning and purpose, not only for us, but the whole, the earth, its people, and all it is. And so I'd like you pleased to consider that. Medicare-for-all, I think, is a good step toward the collective. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holt. I have no one else to speak. If there's anyone who did not sign up and who wishes to speak, please come up to the table and state your name and address.
I'm Amy Leahy, and I live at 712 Monmouth Avenue, Severna Park, Maryland, and I would like to address not the ethics bill that's before you all tonight, but the fact that the Board of Appeals is appointed by each member of the county council, and none of them are addressed in this particular bill tonight in terms of conflicts of interest. In the past, we've had Board of Appeals members who are involved with the development community, and a lot of the issues that come before them involve development. And I do believe that there should be a... Something that does not allow these appointed members to be representing the development community at the same time as when they're taking a vote on whether or not something is admissible or will go forward with the community. And I also would like to just state that in the... Just this past one, there's a March landing appeal that's going on before the Board of Appeals right now, where, for some reason, Dr. Sally Horner was not qualified as someone who could testify on behalf of the community, which, to me, that just makes no sense that the Board of Appeals should be able to make that kind of a determination when none of them are attorneys, or at least if there is an attorney, we don't even know about it. So I just think that there should be a very careful vetting of Board of Appeals members because they have an important job to do in this county. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson.
Julie Johnson, PO Box 6634, in Appleton, Maryland. I apologize for my condition, but I made a special trip to the doctor. They've decided that I don't have anything except a head cold, but it's hard to believe that. But I wouldn't have come if I thought it was going to infect anybody with anything that was like dread mopus or something gross. So there were a lot... I have a lot of things on my agenda, but I think... I did send you all an email. I would like to acknowledge the kind and generous efforts of the Public Information Officer, or Tracy Reynolds, who responds to requests for copies of official records. And she... I asked for the records of the situations where the Anarundel County Department of Health grants a variance to a property owner who doesn't have an adequate setback for parts of his septic system. In other words, this is a deal where a property owner doesn't have a big enough lot, but that's okay. We'll just take part of yours. And you can absorb septic wastes, you know, wastewater, rainwater, and whatever else. And, you know... So I protested, of course, that there should be notice and a hearing and so on, and they told me, "Oh, that... The authority was granted to the Health Department." Okay, well, where are... What documents exist that show... You know, what's the standard form where if a property owner wants the Health Department to grant that, I'd like a copy of that document? I would like a copy of what the people in the Health Department do when they get that. How do you process that kind of an application? What's the form letter that you send out to the impacted neighbor? And apparently, well, she was not able to obtain copies of that. She said, "I needed to, you know, turn elsewhere." So I am turning to you for legislation to create that kind of documentary record.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. The invitation to audience is now closed. Is there an item any council member would like to place on the agenda?
Madam Chair, point of personal privilege.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Pruski.
This past weekend, I had the opportunity to go to Crownsville Cemetery, which is in my district, and there's something called Reis Across America. And I want to thank certainly the number of groups, there were people from Severna Park, Pasadena, Crofton, Gambrels, that laid reis at our veterans' cemetery. And also today happens to be the 75th anniversary of the Battle of the Bulge, being a former history teacher, and we also have some veterans in the room. I just wanted to recognize that even during the holidays, we forget about the freedoms that we have, and I do want to recognize the folks that serve. So I just wanted to make that statement again, and thank you to all that came out on Saturday in the rain. It was a wonderful event. I think they had up to 16,000 reis. They need to get to 18,000 to have every grave covered, but hopefully in the future we'll do that. But thank you for that moment.
Sure. Councilman Lacy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Secretary, kindly add me as a cosponsor to Bill 9419 when it is introduced tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair. Oh, excuse me. Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you. I'd like to be added as a cosponsor to Bill 9319.
May I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill, or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
So moved.
Second.
The motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of December 2, 2019.
The meeting was called to order by Chairman Andrew Pruski at 7:00 p.m. and opened with the invocation given by Ms. Pickard, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Boy Scout Troop 167.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of December 2, 2019?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. The minutes of December 2, 2019 stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the title of the bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill Number 9319, An Ordinance Concerning Cape St. Clair Special Community Benefit District Approval of Loan and Assignment Agreement. Bill Number 9419, An Ordinance Concerning Boards, Commissions, and Similar Bodies Human Relations Commission. Bill Number 9519, An Ordinance Concerning Public Works Utilities Subsidies for Wastewater Extension Project Costs. Bill Number 9619, An Ordinance Concerning Licensing Swimming Pools Lifeguards. Bill Number 9719, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning Housing for the Elderly of Moderate Means.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of the resolution to be introduced this evening.
Resolution Number 5219, Resolution Expressing the County Council's Sympathies and Condolences to the Family of Bowen Levy.
May I have a motion to suspend the rules to vote on Resolution Number 5219 first this evening?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Oh, all in favor?
Aye. That would be a roll call, though. My apologies.
No problem. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 5219.
Thank you. I will first call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to suspend the rules to vote on Resolution Number 5219 is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 5219.
Resolution Number 5219, Resolution Expressing the County Council's Sympathies and Condolences to the Family of Bowen Levy.
Ms. Hare, this is your resolution.
Thank you. I think, actually, probably the best thing I can do is just read the resolution. I think we took a moment of silence, actually, a number of weeks ago after Mr. Levy passed away, so I'm just going to read this resolution now. Resolution expressing the County Council's sympathies and condolences to the family of Bowen Levy. Whereas, Bowen Levy was a student at Central Special School in Anarundel County. And whereas, Bowen tragically passed away on November 10, 2019, after a choking incident at school. And whereas, Bowen was profoundly affected by autism and was known by his family for his true heart and his fun-loving spirit. And whereas, Bowen was the embodiment of joy and lightheartedness in the world. And whereas, the loss of such a young life is a loss to all of us. Now, therefore be it resolved by the County Council of Anarundel County, Maryland, that it expresses its deepest sympathies and condolences to the entire Levy family for the loss of Bowen and wishes them hope in the midst of sorrow.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 5219.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number 5219 is adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 8319 as amended.
Bill Number 8319, An Ordinance Concerning Licenses Towing Companies, Nonconsensual Towing, Storage Facilities, and Redemption Areas Blanket Authorizations to Tow.
This bill is sponsored by Mr. Volkey and Mr. Pruski. Mr. Pruski?
There's really not much to add. This is the second hearing. Obviously, there's been some amendments. We've been working our way through them, and we'll have that come forward. That's really where we're at. Thank you.
Mr. Barron, good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Joining me at the table is Major Passman from the police, Mr. Deck, and Mr. Bryant from IMP, and from Law, Ms. Kenny. I'm Pete Barron with the administration. I believe we stated everything we need to at this moment on... At the last council meeting on 8319. We're happy to answer any questions, but I understand there's some more amendments, and we'll comment on those at the appropriate time.
Any questions from the council? Seeing none, we will now open the public hearing. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Let's see, do I have anybody on the floor here? Mr. Patrick Enright, Mr. Charles Parrish, and Mr. Scott Wright. Mr. Enright.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the council, and ladies of the staff. My name is Patrick Enright, at 2052 Huntwood Drive in Gambrels. I wish to very quickly state that I believe there's a serious flaw in Bill Number 8319. And I have a handout coming to you now that is my suggested fix on that, as a proposed amendment. And it is to allay vagueness and what I believe is uncertainty in just one small section near the end of the bill. And since I have a handout, I'll yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Charles Parrish?
Good evening. Nice to see you again. I sent you all an email. Everybody got the copy. I had one question. The amendment that... This is... I'm sorry. Charles Parrish, 2633, old New Windsor Pike. I should know better. New Windsor, Maryland, Legislative Chairman for the Towing Recovery Professionals of Maryland Association. One question I had, the amendment that was approved. We would be in favor of that if you're removing 1116201D. Reason being, we would not be in favor of it by applying this and requiring in the county a majority of your constituents would not have the opportunity to use towing service. Under 1003, Paragraph E, it must be implied or written permission. The police may issue a ticket. That's not going to remedy a situation that's blocking a car, blocking a driveway, a fire lane. So without being able to use 2110A of the Maryland Code, which is also your code under the same section, by having a 10 road mile limit and not allowing surrounding counties to be next door to it to come in, you don't have enough licensed towers to cover the county of Anarundel. On the second part, the blanket authorization, contract blanket authorization, we went through this last time. TRPM does agree with that, but not with the stipulation that you've made. There was restrictions in the handout that I saw that could be, and even more. But by doing a gated community and permit parking, what you've done is the low-wage households and apartment buildings are not going to be able to afford gates, are not going to be able to afford permits. So you've now deprived them of the same opportunity under the laws I just said to you. Back in '09 and '13, with the support of...
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. Mr. Scott Wright?
Scott Wright, 4175 Plowshire Court, Hampstead, Maryland, manager for Greenwood Towing in Baltimore. If I could, I'd like to yield the rest of my time to Mr. Parrish, so he can finish his thoughts.
Can't do.
Can't do that?
No, no, sir.
Well, then I support everything that Mr. Parrish had proposed for the amendments.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, I find myself. Is there anyone who did not sign up and who wishes to speak? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 8319 as amended is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 8319 as amended.
Bill Number 8319, An Ordinance Concerning Licenses Towing Companies, Nonconsensual Towing, Storage Facilities, and Redemption Areas Blanket Authorizations to Tow.
Is there any further council discussion? I do believe there are some amendments. Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I actually think I need the whole panel back up. I apologize to drag you guys down.
Yeah, please don't leave me alone here.
Poor Mr. Barron by himself. So my question... Well, I'll wait till you get situated. Major Passman, this might be to you. So the point that Mr. Parrish brought up about the gated versus not gated blanket authorization, which it's kind of a misnomer to call it a blanket authorization. It's really a contractual obligation to tow on a private lot, whether it's gated or not that they're asking for. What would be the police department's position on expanding this authority to say it's not just a gated lot, but anywhere that is a private lot or a private road that has a contractual authorization between a tow company and the property manager of that area?
Yeah, we would not be for that. That's... Those type of situations lead to predatory towing. Tow companies could start patrolling the lots and towing for anything they wanted to. State law, you know, our current law, mere state law, that requires an individual person, the property owner, a representative of the community, to actually point out what vehicles should be towed. We believe that it shouldn't be left up to the towers to go and locate their own vehicles to tow without property owners involved.
Okay. And two things that you brought up that I want to follow up on, if I may.
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. So with the piece about state law, are we allowed to be less restrictive? Typically, we have to be as restrictive, if not more restrictive, than state law. In this, do we have an ability to be less restrictive than state law?
The state law allows local governments to set their own standards.
Got you. Okay.
But we mirror state law right now.
And then when you were talking about the predatory towing practices, you're not referring And then when you were talking about the predatory towing practices, you're not referring to spotters, because I think we got into some discussion about that. It's the idea that there would be patrolling. So the tow truck would be there, but not necessarily that someone's there watching and then calling the tow company and saying, "Come out here and tow," someone who's not associated with a property management company. That's what I understand spotting would be.
Yeah, the definition of spotting can be kind of two ways, but, you know, one way could be where they hire a third person to look for vehicles, but other interpretations, I think, could be that the actual tower is being the spotter now because he's going out looking for, he or she is looking for his own business. So, yeah.
I have another follow-up.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to give a fair chance if anybody else wants to jump in. So, Major Passman, one of the questions that I have about this, the way the law is currently set up, and I know because I previously lived in a townhome community and we had private roads and all of that, between the hours of, let's say, four in the afternoon until eight in the morning, it can often be difficult to reach the property management company. Many people start to realize, "I park here, I don't get towed. Oh, okay, well, I'll keep parking there." And then it seems to sort of reinforce what I would call bad habits. So the way that the law is currently written, it strikes me that the property management company has to be reached outside of these normal business hours to now give authorization for each and every tow, which there may be quite a few of them, frankly, if you are in a big community and there are a lot of towing violations. Is there a way that we could rectify that to allow for non-predatory towing practices, but also so that the towing can happen after hours? Because it's concerning to me that people sort of game the system, if you will. They understand, "Well, if I'm here during the daytime, I better not park there," but outside of that, I'm okay. I don't know if the police department has any answer for that, but it's a concern.
Yeah, I would have to look at that. You know, I think that an habitual person that's doing that type of thing and is notifying the property owner or property management company or the community association, if they notify them that at some point, they're going to be taken care of. The fear is, there are some communities, and I'll use the Marley Station Road area, the Tanyard Springs area, some of those communities mirror or look exactly like residential areas, residential homes, single-family homes, and an unsuspecting person who would pull into that neighborhood thinking that it might be a county road because they didn't see the sign when they entered, but it looks like any other county road. And they enter, they park out there, they go into their friend's house and did not get outside to get their permit in time, and next thing you know, a tow truck's hooked up and has either left with the vehicle, or now the vehicle's onto a tow truck. So those are the types of things that could happen. You know, I guess there could be hours, certain hour limits on there.
Okay. I have another follow-up.
Go ahead, Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So with that particular community, because that's one that's in my district and there are others, and I understand that point that you're kind of making, to the extent that those streets are non-public streets and therefore private streets, there's already a requirement that you would have signage indicating where one would be towed to and the name of the company and the address and where the redemption facility is, those types of things. So that's already a requirement. But I guess my question would be, in terms of the workload for the police force, so obviously these are non-consensual toes, so if there is this contractual authorization with the tower, and the tower goes out and is able to then see the violation and tow that individual, where does the police force get involved such that there would be a problem or it would create more work for you, that the department would be opposed to such a contractual authorization?
The complaints that come in from the public of those things occurring.
Okay. And...
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And so with that, has there been a point in time where we did not have this prohibition on these sort of contractual authorizations, and you were seeing more complaints, and now you can look and say the data has gone down as a result of doing this? Do we have any information on that?
I don't know when the law, I don't know when Anor Kenney law mirrored state law, but I think the state law's been around for quite some time.
Okay. All right, that answers my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions, but we do have some amendments. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Two.
Amendment Number Two. This amendment requires that towing companies that conduct non-consensual toes maintain a storage facility and, if separate, a redemption area in the county or within two miles of the county border.
Motion to adopt?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Ms. Lacy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Apparently, Mr. Volkey and I were having similar thoughts across the electronic ether and some drafts that both passed through our legislative council, who then deftly crafted them into one amendment that we could co-sponsor, which solves his constitutionality problem. So, not that I had a problem, but you did. Anyway, that's what this amendment is intended to resolve.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Mr. Pruski?
Yep.
Oh, you're ready to vote? Okay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Two.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Two is adopted.
We have another amendment?
Yes.
Can we just go to the next amendment?
Yeah.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Three.
Amendment Number Three. This amendment requires a towing company to provide its insurance information to the owner of a towed vehicle upon release of the vehicle.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Lacy?
Thank you. To explain, so while I was looking to solve Mr. Volkey's problem, I went ahead and read the whole statute and did some research and all that stuff, and I saw an opportunity to put in this bill to make just a little change, but will provide more protection to those folks whose vehicles are towed, which is, I think, in today's world, it shouldn't be necessary for the person whose vehicle is towed to have to ask for the insurance information of the towing company. So they can just now, if this is adopted, it's when the vehicle is redeemed, the towing company would be required to provide that information, and hopefully that'll cut down on the likelihood of disputes if the vehicle is damaged.
Thank you. Do I have any discussion? Do I have any admin response?
Administration is, supports this amendment. We're fine.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Three.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. Amendment Number Three is adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Four.
Amendment Number Four. This amendment modifies the information required on signs that must be posted in parking lots and along private roads where non-consensual towing is permitted.
Motion to adopt?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Lacy, this is your amendment as well.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This one goes to, it looks like a lot, but it's not really. It's mostly just changes that when I went to look at what was in our code and I compared it to the state code, I thought there are tweaks here and there that we should make to either be more in conformance with the state code or to use language that we actually use in this whole process. Like, we don't say reclamation of vehicles, we say redemption of vehicles. And the other change at the top of, in subsection A, to put the, without a vehicle owner's permission, I thought, as I read that, it just simplifies and makes it much more clear that, what the steps are in this process when you're talking about the private roads and parking lots, which overall is what we are trying to regulate better. And also then, subsection three, at the end of it, we added a clause to address the fact that if the redemption area is separate, it flows from the idea of that very first of Amendment Number Two, is if the storage area and the redemption area are separate, but the state law requires that you have on the sign the address where the car would be towed to. So this is making clear that no matter where those two facilities are, that requirement still applies. It was very clear when I read the law. I'm sorry if it's not very clear right now.
Thank you. Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I actually agree with Councilwoman Lacy. I think it is very clear, and I think it's a good amendment. I am curious, Mr. Bryant or Mr. Deck, if either of you have any sense of what this will cost the towers in the terms of, they may have to do new signage or something like that. I don't know if that's anything you're aware of.
I would guess quite a few probably already have that address on there. But, yeah, there are cases probably, they can probably just do decals on existing, excuse me, on existing signs.
So they may be able to just put something on the metal sign they already have, such that they don't have to reprint the whole thing?
Correct. If there's enough room, so that's a, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Does the Administration have anything to add?
We support this amendment.
Okay, thank you. No more discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Four.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Four is adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Five.
Amendment Number Five. This amendment makes stylistic changes to the provision regarding authorization required for towing vehicles from parking lots or private roads, and adds a requirement that the name and telephone number of the person who authorizes a tow be given.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Still moved.
And a second?
Second.
Ms. Lacy, this is also your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If you're looking at your Page Three of the bill, the change, the main change I think we would want to talk about is that toward the end of that paragraph, in, within this language that the bill, the amended bill will add, my amendment makes more clear that the name and telephone number of the person who authorizes the tow, which in this case I left in the idea of a blanket authorization, understanding that it's really a contractual authorization, but that there must be notice of who has authorized that tow and how they can be contacted, and that person's not necessarily a human being versus, say, a company, a corporation, whatever, but that will further protect a person whose vehicle is towed and hopefully help decrease the confusion about what applies when.
Thank you, Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not sure who to direct this to, so I'll just ask generally. To what extent, yeah, I don't want to call it towing wars, but, you know, people get upset when their vehicle's towed. And if I can look on the sign and see this is who authorized it, and it's maybe the president of the HOA or something like that, as opposed to, you know, XYZ Property Management Company, to what extent is this possibly opening up those folks to direct attacks, if you will, where somebody calls up and says, "I can't believe you had my car towed," and that person's simply acting in their capacity as maybe the president of an HOA or something like that? Because I'm assuming that there are instances where those folks could be authorizing the tow, unless I'm wrong. And, Major Passman, the way you're looking, maybe I am.
Yeah, I thought that this was, I thought this was in addition to what currently is in there, that the person authorizing the tow, the individual who authorizes the tow at that particular time, there needs to be a phone number. The person whose car is towed needs to know how to contact that person regarding their tow, is how I read it. I didn't think this had anything to do with the signs or signage.
Okay, so this, just, maybe I'm misunderstanding it. Let me make sure I'm clear. The way that I was interpreting this is that you, as the person towed, would know, "This is the person who authorized my tow." Not the tow company, not the redemption facility, but this is the actual person who gave the authorization to say, "I can be towed." That's the way I read it. If I'm misreading it, somebody...
Well, the name's always been there, right? And now they're just saying a contact number, a phone number, so I guess the person who's towed can speak to them directly.
Okay, so do you ever have instances now where it's an individual's name as opposed to a company name on there? Again, maybe this isn't an issue.
It's not signage. Right now, the only way a tow can occur is that an individual from that, an owner, owner operator, a manager, needs to tell the tow truck driver, "I want that particular car towed."
Got that.
So I think right now, the way it is, is that the owner of the vehicle's allowed to know who authorized their tow, the name of the person.
Okay.
And I think this is adding that they should, there should be contact information. I believe that's how I read it.
Okay. So this is just adding the phone number? The name's already there?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Ms. Lacy?
If I may clarify, if I, I may have misspoken about the signs. I had to go back and read it, but I concur with what Major Passman said.
Does the Administration, oh, excuse me, Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to echo the concerns of my colleague, if they are concerns. I know there are HOAs in my district where the person of contact doesn't necessarily communicate with the community members through a phone number for, and over regards and concerns for harassment and what that could lead to. I know most HOAs operate voluntarily, and there is not a HOA phone line, so there is a potential for someone to have to put their personal cell phone number. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think that sounds plausible.
Okay. Just want to confirm. Thank you.
Does the Administration have anything to add?
We have, we support this amendment. I will say, there are, and Google Voice is free now, so there are ways that people can protect their number if they wanted to, but I agree with Major Passman's read of this.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Five.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Nay.
Ms. Rodvian?
Nay.
Ms. Hare?
Nay.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Amendment Number Five is defeated.
Bill Number 8319, as amended, will be heard on Monday, January 6th, 2020. Okay, I gotta switch to my next script. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 8419.
Bill Number 8419, An Ordinance Concerning Subdivision and Development: Adequate Public School Facilities School Utilization Chart.
This is an Administration bill?
Good evening again. Pete Barron with the Administration. Joining me at the table is Ms. Tompkins from Planning and Zoning, Mr. Shaknovich from Public Schools, and Mr. Swain from Office of Law. We discussed this bill at the work session. I'll remind everybody that 8419 is required, Office of Planning and Zoning is required to prepare a school utilization chart to be approved by the County Council annually. 8419 is, fulfills this requirement by providing the most current school utilization chart updated, as updated by the Board of Education. There was a lot of discussion last, at the work session, about some changes in the school chart. The attached exhibit is pretty self-explanatory about what schools have opened and what schools have closed. We're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Mr. Pruski?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've been getting a lot of contacts about affordable housing projects in the school system. Has there been any discussion at the board level regarding those concerns? I know this council passed some legislation to try and get affordable housing moving, but we all know the reality is that it just doesn't because we're very limited, to be quite candid. And I just didn't know if there was some discussion about, you know, allowing, I know there was the Mead Village project, other things, but has there been a larger conversation by the board, Mr. Shaknovich? I was just curious.
For the record, Alex Shaknovich, Chief Operating Officer. No, not in a formal position statement. It's been a topic of conversation, but it's not been an item that has formally been voted on or put into a legislative agenda-type of actionable item.
Okay. Just as a follow-up to that, I think, I know my aide's going to be reaching out to you. It'd be good for the board to maybe have a discussion to look at that, because again, some of these projects are limited because of that. And I'm not saying, you know, right now there's a blanket waiver, but if there could be And I'm not saying, you know, right now there's a blanket waiver, but if there could be a larger discussion about making sure that these things can ensure, and we're not talking about hundreds of seats, we're talking about limited seats. If that's something you could go back to the board and say, "Hey, that, this is the, you know, what the, maybe the council would ask you to discuss." I appreciate that.
Yes, sir, gladly.
Thank you.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sadly, I missed the work session, so I get to get my questions out now. Mr. Shaknovich, you and I talked earlier today about the utilization chart, and I want to turn particularly to High Point Elementary School, which is one that I had asked you about. But the same conversation can be had for Park Elementary School, which is in Councilwoman, or Vice Chair Lacy's district. On those two, as I had noted to you, if you take the capacity, the projected enrollment figure that's being used currently, which is under the, I would note, September thirtieth, 2018 enrollment figures, not the most current ones, and you look at the state rated capacity for High Point, when you round it, it comes to 95 percent. When you don't round it, it goes to 94.51 percent. And that, to me, seems like it ought to round up to 95 percent, thereby closing that school as opposed to having it open. Can you provide any insight on why that one's open as opposed to closed?
Yes, sir. Thank you for the question.
Certainly.
So possibly the best place to start is with a little bit of history. A couple councils, while predating a couple councils ago, and Mr. Swain sort of rode shotgun through this change as well, for a school to be closed, the enrollment projection is three years out, had to be in excess of 100 percent. So I'm just going to make a fun example. If, if a school's state rated capacity was at 500, you would have had to have had a projected enrollment of 501 to be designated closed. Your predecessor from your district, Mr. Fink, actually enjoined a conversation during one of the chart adoptions, and it was a fairly robust conversation, and the, the will of the council at that time, I'll call it legislative intent, actually was to alter that practice. And the practice then became the state rated capacity would have to equal or exceed for a school to be closed. So whereas previously, my hypothetical school was 500 was state rated capacity, 501 was closed, now it became 500 was closed. With the advent of the 95 percent bill, it lowered the threshold, but not really the mechanics. The, the conversation was essentially clear that for the school to be closed, it had to be at that exact percentile or above. Rounding was not conveyed essentially in terms of legislative intent. Rounding was not a matter that was conveyed to staff. That's not the way it's been interpreted heretofore, and maybe Mr. Swain could, could help articulate further. But this chart was prepared in a manner and a practice that it has exactly customarily been crafted, again, given our estimation of, of the council and the county's interpretation of its statute. Just understand that this isn't a Board of Education statute, right? So it's an ordinance adopted by the council. You know, we're, we're an agent providing P and Z information, but it's, it has always been our desire to as closely mirror the law and the intent of the legislative body that adopted the law.
So I'll make, I'll make a couple comments on that. One, I'm not sure where, I, I understand you saying legislative intent, and maybe that was a comment that was made during those discussions for prior councils. I wasn't there, as you know, and I, I don't know where in the legislative history that might show up. I guess we might have to find that. I will say, I think all of us were elected and heard loud and clear that school capacity was a major issue, development was a major issue, and the continual sort of fudging the numbers, if you will, to make things keep rolling, isn't what we're supposed to be doing. So for me, I, I'll give another example. If you look at Fort Smallwood Elementary School, my alma mater, over there, if you look at the projected enrollment versus the state cap, that's 84.99. For rounding purposes, you've now rounded that to 85 percent. That, to me, seems like the normal mathematical way to do rounding. If it's over 85.51, that should round up to 86. So I guess I would, I would almost open this up. I get, I suppose if this is the way that it's done, that the council figure out what the intent of the council is. But for my purposes, looking at this chart, I think it's absolutely wrong to say that High Point Elementary School is open with a 94.51 capacity rating. When that rounds up, under the normal rules of mathematics, to be a 95 percent, if there are no decimal places that are included, then at that point, you're talking about a closed school. And the same would be true for Park Elementary, which I believe is at 94.81, 83, something like that, which again, would round up to 95 percent and close that school. So if, if this is something that is an intent of the body discussion, then I would invite my colleagues to have that discussion, because for me, I'd like to see this chart changed. And for those two schools, it seems to me, we owe it to our constituents to be saying, "Those are closed." And I've got more after this, but I'll just leave it at that for now.
Mr. Volkey, if I can make a comment?
Please, yeah.
Greg Swain from the Office of Law. The code section that Mr. Shaknovich is referring to is seventeen-five, five-oh-two, and that is subsection eight-four. And what that provides is the school is closed if it's at or less than 95 percent of state rated capacity, so.
At or less, or at or more?
Is closed if it's at or, I mean, I'm sorry, open if it's at or less 95 percent.
That's right.
Closed if it's over. So I guess what you're saying is if it's a fraction of 94, you think it should be rounded up?
So you're, you're putting a chart in front of us, and I'm not saying it's you. I know it's Office of Planning and Zoning, so take that. But the chart only uses whole numbers. It does not go into fractional numbers or decimal points. As a consequence, there is rounding. If we are going to follow the normal rules of rounding, then if we are at 94.51, we round up to 95. And at 95, the school is closed. If we're, if we're going to go back and say, "We're going to extend this out to decimal points," then I think that should be in this chart, and we should show that to people. But to me, if you're going to round the number up and put it in the chart, the rounded number is 95.
Well, I guess my point is that 95, it's still open.
95 percent, you said 95 percent or more, it's closed.
No. Over 95. So if it's at or less than 95, it's open. If it's over 95, it's closed.
So you're saying you'd actually need to be at 95.1 percent for it to be?
You would need to be over 95, correct.
So if it hits right on the number, that school's still open, even though we've got a 95 percent threshold?
And I think that's the issue with former Councilman Fink that came up. It was right at.
And we wonder why our schools are over capacity. Okay. Great.
Well, actually, your schools are at 95 percent or below.
Hang on, I'm getting there.
Do you?
I have more.
You're the only one with a light on. Okay, Mr. Volkey, one more.
So I'm, I'm just a little baffled why we're using the 2018, September thirtieth, 2018 enrollment numbers. I compared the enrollment numbers from Bill one-nineteen to Bill eighty-four, nineteen, and they're, they're very similar. But I also looked at the numbers from Bill eighty-one, nineteen, which was withdrawn from the administration. And in that bill, the chart that was used actually had the figures for development from May one, 2019, to September one, 2019. So it looked to be a more accurate reflection of what actually is going to be the enrollment in these schools. And if you look at that, at that point, High Point Elementary School was, was actually in better shape, surprisingly. I don't understand how that worked. But I had two other schools, Pasadena Elementary in my district and George Fox Middle School in my district, both of which went from being open schools to clearly above the 95 percent threshold. So I guess, I'm confused why we aren't using the other data from eighty-four, or eighty-one, nineteen. Why are we sort of stuck on this September thirtieth, 2018 number when we seem to have better data?
I think I can answer that.
Okay.
The May to September chart is an interim chart that's prepared by the Office of Planning and Zoning.
Yeah.
Based on sort of a running total of development seats that come and go.
Mm-hmm.
The, this is the annual chart, which is based on state rated capacity, which I believe the Board of Education compiles after September thirtieth.
Right. So we, we take, so the way that the mechanics work essentially, and I'll just use this as the exact example, so we take the certified September thirtieth, 2018 enrollment that's audited by MSDE and Maryland Department of Planning, that's the bases. That then informs the three-year projection. And so this chart, actually, if you take a look at the header at the top of the page, it says the 2021.
Yeah, I see that.
The 2021 is that three-years-out rule. So it's three years out from the certified, using the Education Facility Master Plan, which is a document prepared annually and adopted by the board in June for submission to the state as a state requirement in July. So this processes has always been predicated upon the, the prescriptive mechanics of the timing and auditing and adoption of that Education Facility Master Plan. So that's why the fundamental basis is that September thirty, 2018, then projected three years out. And that, if you were to go online, you'll see that those numbers align with the adopted July 2019 adopted Education Facility Master Plan that's received a concurrence from the Maryland Department of Planning as well.
I'm looking at seventeen-five, five-oh-two, Mr. Swain, and it talks about C, projected enrollment. It says, "The projected enrollment's based upon the most recent Educational Facilities Master Plan prepared by the Board of Ed and shall include any predicted increase in the number of students from new development in the geographical attendance area of the school and other students expected by the board to enroll in the school, including students assigned to the school for programmatic reasons." Now, is it, I mean, it seems to me like the 2019 data is going to be more indicative of the development. So are you saying we're not allowed to use that data, we're not allowed to look at it? Because, I mean, I've got schools in here that are, it, it changes the rating. They go from open schools to closed schools if we take what it appears to be is the more accurate data. So I'm just confused, are we prohibited from using this other data? Because I, I don't want to sit here and say these schools are open when we know in reality that they're not. I mean, I had students here from Pasadena Elementary earlier. I, I kind of said just offhand, "Do you think you've got more or less kids than you had last year?" And the answer was, "Probably got more kids over there." So, I mean, I'm looking at it and I don't understand. I, I'm confused as to why we're using data that's almost a year and a half old when it looks like we've got newer data.
So my response to that is that, well, twofold. One, that the way that the chart has been prepared, has been following the mechanics that's been in place since at least 2005, 2006. So it, it is consistent with prior practices. So I think part of the issue is that we have always relied upon a mechanism where there's external validation. So the state rated capacities are externally validated, the certified annual enrollment is externally validated, so that if the chart or the data behind it was challenged in some manner, at least there was consistency, there sort of was a prescriptive methodology, and there was an external auditing or validation of that, because this is something that, that could potentially be subject to legal scrutiny. And we always felt, collectively, we, large we, felt that there was some merit to that. With, with, you know, deference of planning and zoning, that, you know, the interim charts, or the information utilized or gleaned through those interim charts maybe don't have as many checks and balances to them. And certainly, my reading of, of the law and Mr. Swain may feel differently, I think directs us towards using that formerly adopted, audited, prescriptive state education facility master plan processes. And that, and that's simply the direction that we've always followed.
Thank you. Ms. Lacy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Does the school system maintain any kind of statistic where I would know sort of the percentage of overcrowded classrooms within a school? For example, Mead High School, I've spoken with students who've pointed out that when they've gone at different levels of a particular subject, say if they're in the AP class or an honors class, you know, their, their classroom, plenty of space, not crowded. When they go into the general level of that same class for scheduling reasons, they're in a classroom that's so packed, they can't fit in any more seats, and there aren't enough seats for those kids to be in there. And these are, as you know, at Mead, windowless classrooms that they're packed into. So Mead is open at 84 percent, and I, looking at this chart, a percent utilization chart doesn't give you that reality. The disconnect that I see from a policy standpoint is that the chart about utilization seems to me more about development decisions, whether or not we're going to allow development to occur in any particular area, and how to order, if we say, "Here's a cutoff, and people now, after that, need to get in line," that's the process that we've set up. But we, this chart doesn't include, as far as I can tell, any measure to actually look at crowding of students within existing schools, including ones that are open. So I'd like to know whether the school system maintains any sort of data that you could provide, that we could look at to see what the difference is? And if not, where would you suggest I go to get that data?
So in response to that, well, let me begin by saying that the Board of Education in no way, shape, or form is involved in growth and development decisions. It's not our charge. That is not a core function of the school district. We're simply providing data to the county for their utilization and complying with, with the legal requirement, i.e., IED ordinance before you. Now, directly to your question, yes, we absolutely have data with, regarding class sizes at the, at the school level. Schools are giving staffing allocations. How they elect to use that staffing allocation is at the purview of an individual principal. It also varies by semester or year, depending on what youngsters decide to choose as an elective or not. If there are low enrollment numbers in a class, the principal has to make a decision whether he or she wishes that class to proceed, i.e., assign one of their staff members to that section, or say, "No, I'm not going to allow that class to proceed, and I'm going to take that staff member and utilize that staff member differently." That, that's sort of a local-level decision. We, Central Office, do not prescribe that, and I would, my personal non-corporate opinion is I think that would be a slippery slope to start looking at an individual's principal course allocation, staffing allocation, decisions at that local level, and allow that to influence how growth and development practices may play out across this county.
Let me ask you it this way, then. Do we have, does the fire marshal inspect the schools, or do we have any other inspection that says, you know, "This classroom at this size is rated for this number of students"?
Yes, and so the answer to that is yes, twice a year. And you'll find that the occupancy load that's assigned by the state fire code and NFPA one-oh-one, which is adopted here locally as well, the 2018 edition, in every case I've ever come across, you're allowed to put far more youngsters into a classroom by fire code than you are by what our staffing guidelines, and I want to underscore the word guidelines. So we've got staffing guidelines that have a preferred ratio, you know, one to 28, one to 25, whatever. Those are operational guidelines that the school district has, has assembled. Largely, those guidelines are, A, self-selected by the school district, and B, locally influenced, that local building principal, and C, influenced by the budget. How many positions do we have allocated in each and every year? But, but to loop back to your original question, you will find that the fire code allows, in every instance that I've ever been affiliated with or experienced, far more youngsters in each and every space than our classroom student-teacher ratios or guidelines, et cetera.
Okay. Well, I'll be, I don't want to take up the whole night with my questions, but I will be following up with you to get the data on the classroom utilization rate at the, at that level. I'll call it that. Thank you.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I know that the actual approval of this chart is in our code. Is the formula in which the numbers that we see on the paper are created, is that in the code? Does it have to be a certain year's certified numbers and projections? Is that codified?
So that is not in the county's code. That's actually in the state code and in the state administrative regulations that govern the creation, audit, and adoption of an education facility master plan. That's uniform across all 24 jurisdictions. So it's, that language you'll find in the state documents, not in your county code.
Okay. I guess, you know, I just want to express my frustration with the, the number on paper versus the actual number in real time of students in seats. Oak Hill Elementary, which is in my district, has officially been over capacity for over a year. But unfortunately, until, and I'm grateful that they are now closed, but until now, they have still been rated open. And it's the formula, the mechanism that closes the school that, in my opinion, needs some adjustment. But I appreciate that information.
Yes, ma'am. And I believe that the administration is, is in the process of standing up a adequate public facility ordinance task force, and certainly that, in all likelihood, may be one of the items that they would wish to look at. The timing, the sequence, and methodology, mitigation methods amongst a myriad, and I believe there, there's at least two, if not more, council members likely to be on that work group.
Yep. Thank you.
And I can confirm.
Thank you.
And I can confirm.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I appreciate that. I think it's great that there's that APF work group. I guess my problem is, I'm looking at this chart right now. If we pass this, this becomes the law. People start acting under this. And the work group, that's a big task. I mean, there's going to take some time for that to happen. I'm not, you don't just snap your fingers and fix the APF situation with the roads and schools. I know Councilwoman Lacy, well, Vice Chair Lacy, Chairman Pickard, myself, we're all on that task force. There's going to be time on that. So, I guess my question at this point would be, I recognize that this was prepared using school board data by the Office of Planning and Zoning. Is there a willingness on the Office of Planning and Zoning's part to go back and look beyond just the 2018 enrollment numbers from September 2018 to say, almost like a mashup is what I'm thinking? You know, you sort of weight it in a certain way. You recognize, yes, we know this is the confirmed enrollment, but you also know, this is where we see a lot of development applications coming in. This is who we think, you know, is going to be in the pipeline. This is what's been approved. And so, we get a more accurate figure for this, so that we're not opening up schools based on almost 18-month-old data, where we're then saying, yeah, go ahead, we're going to approve the application, you meet APF. But in reality, the school doesn't have capacity. So, I don't know. Tough question, sorry.
Well, I'm not sure exactly what you mean by a mashup, but we would-
Potentially looking at both and using some judgment, instead of just rotey looking at the 2018 numbers and saying, this is what we're going to bind ourselves to a year and a half later for a utilization chart.
One point I can add is, prior to amending the APF ordinance a year, 18 months ago, we only had the annual chart, which was always based on the enrollment data from the Board of Education, and that requirement is still in the code. The May chart and the September chart were meant to be a way to update that data as we proceeded through the year, but the annual chart was always intended to be a new start. So, every time, that's the base that they're working from. That chart, and that enrollment data does take into account development, because development projects in the pipeline are always run by the Board of Education. Whether they match completely, I can't say for sure, but that is every, that is sort of the process that was envisioned. Every year, it restarts when the November chart is approved by council. That's the reason the two interim charts are not approved by council. They're only approved by the Planning and Zoning Officer.
So, do we have the September 30th, 2019 enrollment numbers? Because again, we're looking at September 30th, 2018.
Yes, we do.
Okay.
And they've been, they've now, as of last Tuesday or Wednesday, I think, just been certified by the state.
So, why aren't we using those as the data for this chart?
Because this chart is required to be delivered to this body in the month of November. We just, last week, as I stated, received from the state their concurrence that our September 30, 2019 enrollment canvas had been completed properly, had been audited, vetted, and approved. That already occurred in the month of December. That is the basis upon which we will spend between now and spring to put together the projections, the next six years' worth of projections, which will be inclusive of the 2022 numbers that will come before this body next May. So-
So, this was supposed to come up in November. We haven't voted on it yet. We've got new numbers. They've been certified. Is there something that prohibits us from using the good numbers, the true numbers for this year, to pass this chart that's now in front of us?
So, the enrollment projections that were just certified last week, that come from September 30, 2019, have not, we have not begun the process of creating projections, nor have those projections come before the Board, nor have those projections gone to the State Department of Education or the State Department of Planning for external validation. So, that's just a point of information.
Do you know how the numbers that you projected to have in 2019 compared to the numbers that you actually have in 2019 on that September 30th, 2019 count?
I do have that information. I don't have that with me to see.
Do you know if it's different?
So, we, we, this year, we have more students enrolled than we initially projected. Last year, we had less actual students enrolled than we had projected. So, there is some variability of projection is exactly that, right? It's a best projection, and then reality happens. But we do know on a school-by-school basis, so that's at the macro level, on an individual disaggregated by 125, there are schools that came in lower than projected, there are schools that came in higher than projected.
So, can the Office of Planning and Zoning go back, looking at the 2018 numbers that have been verified, now looking at the 2019 numbers that have also been state-certified as of September 30th, and factoring in the development that you know is in the pipeline, and put together a chart that actually reflects the capacity of our schools at this current time? Because again, we're passing a chart on bad data, and we're going to have people continuing to build and be approved for developments based on data that's 18 months old, when we are literally looking at data that is accurate, that will show us a much better picture, and we're being asked to sort of pass this through. And I'm just baffled why. To me, it doesn't make any sense.
Thank you for that question. Holly Tompkins, for the record, Office of Planning and Zoning Development Division. This process is new to me since I've been here just about, just over a year. And what has happened that I am aware of and can tell you regarding the calculations of this is that it is actually supplied to us, and we are the vehicle that gets it to you. But that said, the, what you heard about how the calculations are done, I will be curious to know myself how the work group comes out with this. And certainly, the information that we're providing to the Board of Education for our part, we're tracking very closely internally with all the different developments and the numbers of units that are being proposed out there. So, we are providing a lot of information to the Board of Education, so it's not just a number from 2018. There are current developments being provided to them, I believe, as I understand it. So, there is more recent information than just that number.
Okay. And I appreciate that. Is the Office of Planning and Zoning willing to take the verified numbers for the school board as of September 30, 2019, look at them as they compare to 2018, and then look at the projections you have for development, and reassess this chart? That's really my question.
Let Mr. Kai Ziegler weigh in on that a little bit, but I do want to say, for the record, the administration delivered this bill November 18 to the council. So, it was introduced in November. Just want to be clear that there are some statutory timelines that we did have to meet. I think what you're asking, you know, I'm interested to hear sort of all the work that goes into doing that, but I think this is a perfect discussion for our next task force meeting about this process, because what you are talking about is a fair amount of work. Had we introduced this bill on, I can't recall the first Monday in November, but whatever that date would be-
December 2.
-we might not have had the state verified data. So, I just want to be clear about that. So, sorry, Mr. Kai Ziegler.
Good evening, Steve Kai Ziegler, Planning and Zoning Officer. I'm going to agree with a lot of what I've heard. Mr. Barron, I think, said it very well. I'm not sure if all of the council understands, I guess, the willingness of the administration to undertake an overhaul, a review of the adequate public facilities ordinance. There's two main components that we're prioritizing. One is school APF, and I have the honor of leading that group. And I've had a fair amount of experience in other jurisdictions with APF in particular schools. Our first meeting will be scheduled, real meeting will be scheduled in January. And Councilman Volkey, the issues you're bringing up are absolutely the things that we need to be looking at as a part of this task force. What I would say is, I'm open to looking at it in all different ways. I haven't made up my mind as to how I think we should do this. The issue you're bringing up certainly is a part of what we need to undertake. The issue is, though, if we're using different methodology to produce a worksheet or chart, we still have the constraints of the existing law for school APF that we have to follow. And if we're talking about doing something different in terms of implementation, we would have to amend that law. But that's actually part of the effort of the work group. So, I'm more than willing to take a look at how we could do this differently by creating different charts with different assumptions or methodology. Key question is, what do we do with that information, then? Because we are constrained with an existing law.
You have colleagues waiting. Mr. Pruski.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sitting on both sides of this, as a former Board of Education member and also of the council, this is an ongoing discussion. The one thing that I want to make very clear, that I don't think any decision should be parochial, because my school is over 95, you're 84, there needs to be a standard. Now, if we want to pass a different law about what's measured, but the one thing that I will not support is somebody saying, well, my area, and that happened with the prior council, not you. So, that's, I just want to make that very clear. It's very important that a standard's set, and we stick with that. The other piece I want to point out, and Ms. Lacy, you were asking this earlier, why do class sizes maybe are overcrowded sometimes? So, let me give you an example from my area. In the western part of the county, there's been a large population of English-language learners. And what has happened is, many of them not only have their, you know, primary family, but also other family members that have moved in the residence. So, that increases enrollment, and you can't, how do you measure that? You know, there's metrics that are there, but it's hard to take in, you know, whether other family members are coming with them. Also, this happens in other districts where a school, you know, Blue Ribbon School or Crofton opens up, now all of a sudden, it's existing homes. And let me make that clear, it's not just new development. Existing homes are also taken in, and then people want to come. So, I just want to make sure that we're clear about that. And I think the work group is a good idea. I'm going to put this commercial out here, because I've said this before. We're not going to tax, and we're not going to get money from the governor or the state to solve the problem. I'm just going to tell you that right now. So, we need to find a way, as a council, to look between that 95 and 100 and make developers pay. If they want to come in and they're willing to buy land, add an addition, and we give them a little wiggle room, that was the bill that I'm trying to introduce in part of this work group. It's an idea. I'm not saying it's a panacea, but I'm just going to tell you, to solve the problem, Mr. Shaknovich knows this, for the past 15 years, prior councils, development decisions, there's a whole bunch of reasons why there's overcrowded areas. There's no question about that. But we're not going to get state funding from the IEC to build all the schools in capacity. Old Mill could take 15 years, 10 years. I mean, the problem that we have to look at is, what can be a realistic way to move this forward? And that's where this work group, I think Mr. Barron is saying to come in.
I couldn't agree more that the work group is going to chew off some very big issues. I think it's been this administration's modus operandi to take on big issues, and we intend to do that with the APF, particularly with relation to schools. So, I think that's, well, I'll just say that about that, but I do want to sort of also echo your statement. We are looking at a county that has made decisions in the past that we will have to address. We are not going to get some windfall from on high. This is issues and capacity issues and school quality issues that we here, Anarundel County residents, are going to have to deal and face, and it is this body that will be tasked with passing a budget soon. You passed a budget earlier this year that turned head-on to these issues, and we are nowhere near out of the woods when it comes to our backlog with school construction. I believe the number is close to $2 billion, and we could, we are not going to get that money from the state. So, we are going to have to have a plan and work that plan. And the budget that was passed by this council this year was a great first step, but it was only that, a step.
Madam Chair, I'm going to follow this, and I promise I'll be done.
Okay.
The other thing that I do want to bring up is that the lack of purchasing property for schools. I've said this when I ran for my second term, that we are in a bind, because the property, particularly in certain areas, is gone. You know, Sally and Mr. Volkey's district, some of the areas in my area where they really need capacity. So, as the administration, as a council, we need to be looking at buying property now, because there will be none.
Yeah. We no longer have the opportunity to kick the can.
Absolutely. Thank you.
That's right. Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and Chairwoman. I think if I'm hearing everyone correctly, the biggest, one of the biggest issues that I'm seeing right now is the timing of the chart and how that plays into which data is able to be used, based on whether the data's been processed or whatnot. So, I would just like to sort of formally ask that, as part of this task group, we look specifically at the timing of this chart and how best to time it, so that we are using as best we can the most up-to-date information.
Agreed.
Thanks.
Ms. Radvian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to add, and as my experience as a teacher, while there's definitely issues with school-level crowding, or school-level overcrowding, I think where it's most, felt most acutely is in each and every classroom. So, I hope that our conversations about crowding and overcrowding are revisited when it comes to, when it comes budget time and us to look at, you know, the continued need to hire additional teachers in the county, because I think that's where you can make some of the best inroads in bringing that feeling of crowding down. Obviously, at some point, that you have to build new capacity, but the crowding is felt in large classes.
Thank you. Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I won't ask any more questions. I'll just make a couple of statements. Number one, I'm looking right now at the Anarundel County, or Anarundel Community College Center for Local Studies. The development was the top issue that is a concern of our residents. Every one of us knows it. Every one of us ran on it. Every one of us is up here in some form or fashion, because voters were concerned about development. This chart right here is a major driver of development. If a school is open, that is one big test that gets checked off. It's a major test. This is a driver of that. And if we vote, well, and if we pass this and a school's open, then, among other things, there can be development. If we, if we change it and the schools are not open, then you can't develop. That's just something that goes off the table. So, if we vote for this chart as it's written, as it's drafted in front of us, knowing that there's better data out there, we are choosing to make policy on outdated data for the future. And that, to me, is not what I was elected to do. So, for these reasons, I'll be voting against this. If we can't get some agreement, that Office of Planning and Zoning will go back and will revisit this chart, and will try to take into account the actual current data on the schools, so that we have a sense of what's going on. Because I'm all, I agree, the work group is very important, but I have a chance right now, right in front of me, to make an impact on the development and the overcrowding that my constituents are telling me is the number-one concern that they have. I can't pass this chart as written.
Maybe I can ask a question of Mr. Swain. Can this chart be amended?
Well, being a piece of legislation, yes. Technically, it can be amended. What the requirement is, is that the chart is based on enrollments projected by the Board of Education and the capacity of the schools as determined by the Board of Ed in the most recent educational facilities master plan prepared by the Board of Education, which I think is what Mr. Shaknovich was referring to, this data. Now, it also adds, as well as new students proposed to be generated by each new development approved by the Office of Planning and Zoning since the last school utilization chart was approved or updated. So, the requirement of the statute is that the enrollment data be based on the master plan and then approved developments since the last chart, which was, I'm assuming, November, December of last year.
So, it's my understanding that, as it sits right now in our own code, we need to vote on this chart as it has been prepared for us, because it's in our, the way it was created is in the code.
Correct.
I would, I would like to, I think the work group is going to educate a lot of people on this topic, but as we look, this is a much more complicated issue than this chart and this piece of legislation is taking into account. Because when the state is also looking to fund school construction, which many of our districts are looking to build new schools, they're actually looking at overall capacity in the county, which we are not at. We are not over-capacity countywide with our schools. So, it's a much larger conversation. So, if we, by saying we're going to close schools, but one feeder system has capacity in the feeder, we could be hurting ourselves in actually getting state funding to build a new school. We need, this is a much larger conversation, but with that, I will yield to Ms. Fiedler, who's been waiting patiently to speak.
What happens if this council does not pass and approve this chart?
If this chart is not approved, then the duty of the Office of Planning and Zoning is to deliver the chart by November 30th of each year. If this chart is not approved, it would revert back to the last chart that was approved by this council last year, and then- by this council last year and then be updated in May and September of 2020 by the Planning and Zoning Officer, and then again, November 30th of next year.
Okay, and then my second, if I may.
Sure.
I heard in the code what is required for the formula. What I did not hear is that it's required to use a specific year of certified information. And I haven't heard an affirmative yes or no if we can go back and use the most recent information that we now have that is available to us based on timing that has happened in the past two months. How do we initiate that? Can we initiate that? Do you need to know that an overwhelming number of council members would like to use that certified information? Because that, it doesn't sound like that is in the code.
Well, what's in the code is the enrollment data comes from the Board of Education. And then supplementing that is approved developments. So our ability to change the data, I mean, the requirement is it has to come from the Board of Ed. That's the starting point. The Board of Education, I do not believe, is going to change that data until there's a new functional master plan.
Right, and the, so again, the timeline of the master plan process is the state code requires it to be remitted to the state in July of a given year, calendar month of July, which is why it's prepared by staff with the most recent data that's available up to the month of May. It's taken to our board in the month of June so that it can be adopted by the board for the purposes of transmitting it to the state in July. And then, the reason why November has been picked, November 30th, is actually in your code, is that the state, after the data is given to the state in July, the state needs a period of time in which they can do that external testing and validation and give to us either their agreement, or if not agreement, at least a lack of objection to our data, that their external audit didn't prove any concerns, any Q and A that we have to respond back to, et cetera. So we do want to provide this council with the most accurate and up-to-date, but yet audited and certified and something that can survive in the court. It has been a very regimented process. I was involved in a court case as a witness on behalf of the county. The county got sued over this, and this is just my interpretation, and I've got like three credits of law in my whole life. I'm sorry. But one of the things that my career observation has allowed me to learn, though, is that courts honor process. They honor sort of fidelity to a time-tested, no variance, we didn't mash something up, you know, on this one occurrence, whatever. And being able to prove that, nope, this is a very agnostic, data-driven, regimented, time-tested, externally validated has, and I'm not saying this can't be improved upon, but having that sort of looking a judge or an administrative hearing officer straight in the face and saying, yes, Your Honor, yes, sir, this is exactly what it's done. It's done in accordance with this, here's the guidelines, here's the external validation, that has proved valuable in court settings before. So my only advice, and I don't literally have the ability to give advice, is that whatever we do eventually come up with, please make sure that it's survivable and meets all of the due diligence requirements and, you know, legal sufficiency requirements, et cetera. This is not something that I believe any of us would want to do on the fly.
Ms. Fiedler.
I just, I appreciate that. I will be supporting this bill this evening because it is closing a school in my district that has been over-capacity for a number of years, but I do want to reiterate my concerns over the formula and hope the work group is able to resolve this for future calendars.
The work group is certainly going to try.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'm almost done. I just want to note that I think all of us realize we're past the 11:30 deadline. So while I appreciate the comments about process and that courts like process, we're way past that at this point. And so there's nothing that I can see in 175502 that dictates the date by which this has to be approved. So I'm not sure why we can't go back and get it right. It's kind of my point. If we were before 11:30, I think I might feel a little differently, but now it's 12:16, so we're a little over two weeks past that. And if we've already gone past it and we're already having to say to a court, well, we're two weeks past the process, why not get it right? Number two, Mr. Barron had brought up the amendment process. I actually inquired about an amendment to this to our legislative staff and was informed basically that the only way that this could be corrected would be if something came back. I needed to convince the administration to be able to change this and then bring down a new chart to the council, because I don't have the ability to line-by-line amend this chart. So after I learned that, that's why I'm having this discussion this evening, because I think this falls squarely within the purview of the administration to correct this. And lastly, I would note that while the Board of Education supplies the information for this chart, in fact, under Section A of 175502, it states, "The Planning and Zoning Officer shall prepare a school utilization chart for approval by ordinance of the County Council." So the ultimate authority, while the information comes from the Board of Ed, rests with planning and zoning, which means it falls squarely within the purview of the administration. So that's what I'm asking. I'm asking the administration, through the Office of Planning and Zoning, to again, take a look at this chart, let's get it right, let's pass the correct figures, the correct information in here, and make sure that we're doing a service to the citizens of our county who expect this to be the number-one issue that we're dealing with. Thank you.
We will now open the public hearing. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. I don't have anyone signed up. Ms. Johnson, are you making your way? Okay, thank you. We'll have Ms. Johnson to speak.
Madam Chairman, Julie Johnson, PO Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. This is a very difficult bill to deal with, and it clearly impacts the development throughout the county. And I concur with the comments made by council members, that these are critical issues for every resident of the county, including, you know, those young scouts that came to prior meetings and this meeting. What happens in terms of what's approved changes the world that they live in for the next 50, 100, or 100 years. So with that acknowledgement, I appreciate the concept that maybe we ought to see what we can do about having the opportunity to address the, or to incorporate the more recent data. But I also feel obligated to mention to you that although I don't know the details, there is a headline for one of the Supreme Court cases that goes something like, is it a crime to be homeless? There are six homeless residents of some Midwestern city who were sleeping in the park fundamentally or camping in public parks. And so that's illegal in that community, and therefore, they were in violation of the law. And they're going, look, there's no affordable housing, we're working, we're doing the best we can to survive, why can't we pitch a camp someplace for protection from the elements and produce, you know, and provide some minimal level of stability for our families? So your job is difficult enough, but I ask you to consider, what are you going to do if the Supreme Court says to you, you have to consider providing accommodations for the homeless in your district? You know, how does that change the calculation of how many students are going to be occupying those classroom seats? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Ms. Leahy.
Good evening again, Amy Leahy, Severna Park, Maryland. And as the wife of a former school board member and somebody whose three children have gone through the public schools, and someone who also sits on the Citizens Advisory Committee where we are looking at all of these issues, including school's capacity is definitely one of those. I ask that you vote against this. I think it's very important that we have up-to-date data. I think what Mr. Volkey pointed out is this, passing this bill would be something that's going to be a development incentive rather than trying to deter development, which is, has been an issue in this county for a really long time. I would like to see you guys get this right and vote against it and wait for the accurate numbers to come through. Thank you.
Thank you. The public hearing on Bill Number 8419 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 8419.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to postpone the hearing on this bill until the next meeting.
The meeting, the public hearing has been held.
The vote, I want to postpone the vote on it.
Hold the vote.
Yeah, hold the vote, sorry, that's what I want to say. Yep.
So, motion has been made.
Second.
And seconded. Who seconded?
Ms. Fiedler.
Okay.
We need to vote on that, though.
Yes, so there is a motion on the table to hold the vote on Bill Number 8419 until...
The next meeting.
The next meeting, January 6. Shall I call the roll on the motion?
Please, thank you.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to make a statement before we vote. I certainly respect my colleague. I've been there because on the list I have a school that's 118%. So I certainly understand, but I think that we have a standard. I think the board, the way I heard it, won't have the numbers for another month or two anyway, so even if we wait, it just, it doesn't match up a timeline. And I think the APF work group, as discussed, will solve it. I understand, again, the intention, but I just, I think we need to vote on the bill as it is, it's just my opinion.
Okay, excuse me, I apologize, but I do not believe this motion is debatable.
That's correct.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please call the roll on this motion.
Mr. Pruski.
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Nay.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Nay.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative, the motion to hold the vote on Bill Number 8419 is defeated.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 8419.
Okay, I have indeed read the title, Madam Chairman, so we can proceed to...
Oh, sorry.
To roll call vote.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 8419.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Nay.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative, Bill Number 8419 is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 8519.
Bill Number 8519, an ordinance concerning personnel positions in the classified service.
This is an administration bill, Mr. Barron.
Good evening again. Bill 85, oh, sorry. Joining me at the table is Ms. Dickerson from Personnel, Ms. Atkinson from Personnel, Mr. Beecham from Budget, Mr. Swain, and Ms. Marshall. Well, Mr. Swain just left the table. So 8519 is to create five new position classifications in the classified service, modify the minimum qualifications for four existing positions in the classified service, and increase and decrease positions in certain classifications in equal numbers in various offices and departments. As I mentioned at the work session, we will be offering an amendment. You should have it in your packet to correct an error. I'll discuss the specifics of that at the appropriate time. With that, we're happy to answer any questions on this bill.
Thank you. Mr. Volkey.
If Madam Auditor has a question, you can go first.
Oh, excuse me. No, I just have a statement. In our blue letter, I had indicated that we confirmed that the departments have sufficient funds for the second part, the advancements. As far as the detention, they do. The Fire Department, when we did our calculations, we had factored in a recruitment class. It's really not in the salaries, but in the overtime they've spent as of November 30th, like 65% of their budget, so I can't say for sure at this time that they'll be able to stay within their budget. I said in the blue letter, the annual cost would be $145.6 if they, if they go externally or up to $340 if they go outside. So it'd be roughly half of that if they hired them right at January 1st, so it'd be really less than that. There is funds in the contingency fund and, you know, but I just wanted to put it on the record that they may not have the funds within their budget. The other thing I should say is, you know, obviously, they can cut their overtime and stay within their budget, it's early, but I just can't say with the tracking and the trend of what is normally spent by this time that they'll definitely have overage to cover it.
Thank you, Madam Auditor.
Thank you.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess my question ultimately would be sort of, what's the purpose of at least the reclassifications and creating these new GIS sub-classifications? Because currently, you've got GIS specialists in the code, you're now creating GIS Specialist 1, 2, you've got senior technicians, you've got, I think there was one more, but I guess I'm just trying to understand, what's the purpose with all of this? Where do you see yourself going with it?
This, Sherry Dickerson, Personnel Officer, this transaction will primarily create a career ladder for individuals in this classification family.
Okay, and is this part of the overall sort of county stat or Arundel stat push that the administration has been moving toward? Because I'm sort of looking at this and seeing the departments that are involved and trying to figure out, is that the reason for creating this ladder because those folks are part of that?
No.
Okay, so that doesn't have anything to do with it?
No, it doesn't.
So then, do we currently have some issue with folks who are in the GIS specialist track?
The major issue is that there is no career path for them.
Okay.
They would have to change jobs and move completely out of that classification family.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you.
I don't have any other questions. Did we want to proceed with this amendment?
I think...
Oh, sorry. I was getting all excited like I knew what I was doing. We will now open the public hearing. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. I don't have any signups, seeing no movement in the audience. Public hearing is now closed. Shall we move on to the amendment?
Shall we do then?
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 1.
Actually, I shall first.
Oh, gosh.
No, I'm going to read Bill Number 8519 and for vote. Bill Number 8519, an ordinance concerning personnel positions in the classified service.
Is there any further discussion? There is an amendment. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 1.
Amendment Number 1. This amendment corrects pay grades for the GIS Senior Specialist and GIS Specialist 2 positions.
Do I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Oh, you have to call the roll.
Yeah, any discussion.
Any discussion?
The administration, this is an administration amendment, we support it. The amendment corrects pay grades for the GIS Senior Specialist.
Ms. Lacy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Perhaps, while Mr. Swain is seated, and I hate to make you come back to the table, but would this be considered a technical amendment or a substantive amendment? Well, our council isn't here tonight, so I'd like advice.
We believe it's substantive.
You do? Okay. Well, I don't think so. That's why I asked for an opinion.
I believe it's been determined already in advance that it is substantive.
Yeah, I was hoping it would have been technical.
Yeah, I asked the same thing earlier.
Okay, well, if there's consensus, that's fine, thank you.
Any other discussion on this amendment? Madam Secretary, where are we now?
We are going to call the roll on Amendment Number 1?
Let's call the roll on Amendment Number 1, thank you.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy. Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 1 is adopted.
Bill Number 8519, as amended, will be heard on January 6th. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 8619.
Bill Number 8619, An Ordinance Concerning Public Ethics Conflicts of Interest.
I believe this is Mr. Volkey's bill.
Indeed it is, thank you. So, this bill was discussed at the work session, although I wasn't there, but I did get a chance to listen to that, and I heard that Mr. Botzaras was there. He's also here with us again this evening, and I believe he had the opportunity to answer questions. In a nutshell, as I sent an email to my colleagues to give you some background on this, effectively what this bill does is take existing ethics opinions that have been promulgated by the Ethics Commission going back over two decades and codifies those ethics opinions into the ethics law as they pertain to members of this body. Most particularly, it clarifies conflict of interest language so that it's abundantly clear when a council member does or does not have a conflict of interest. But again, this is consistent with opinions that are already in existence and have been promulgated by the Ethics Commission. I would further note that this bill has been reviewed by both the County Ethics Commission as well as the State Ethics Commission, both of whom have concurred with that, and both of whom, I don't want to speak out of school, Mr. Botzaras, but I believe are in support of this.
That's correct, Mr. Volkey.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Pousky.
I'm sorry, I was trying to be recognized before the sponsor. So, I went back and forth based upon the work session, asking for several legal opinions, both independent, county council, other things. And I've come to the conclusion, I'm going to continue to recuse myself. I did that at the work session. Again, the bill doesn't have any direct impact, but it may, whether it's amendments or other things. So, I'm going to step off the dais for this discussion just based upon that. Again, the impact is I have a spouse who works for a state agency, but, you know, if there's an amendment that's added or discussion, so I'm going to recuse myself. I didn't have a chance before Mr. Volkey started, but excuse us.
Ms. Rodvian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also like Mr. Pousky out of an abundance of caution because of the directions that this bill may go, and choosing to recuse myself.
Does the administration have anything to add to this discussion?
For the record, Pete Barron with the administration, I'll introduce the folks at the table, even though they may have already been referenced, Mr. Botzaras from the Ethics Commission and Mr. Swain from Office of Law. This is a council bill that affects council members. The administration is neutral on the bill. I would, just want to make one quick comment. With any changes like this, it's important to be very deliberative and very careful. There's, it's a tough job that members of the council have, and many folks have jobs outside of their role on the council. And I don't believe it's a good thing to preclude members, we wouldn't want to preclude members from having career jobs outside of their role on the council. It provides a perspective that I think is helpful for the debate in public policy. I think we want to be careful to make sure that citizens from every walk in life can serve on the council. We don't want to become just lawyers, and no offense to lawyers, but just from one particular career. So, that's, that's the only comment I will make on it. And as I mentioned, this is, this is a bill that affects council members, so that's as far as I'm willing to say.
Thank you. Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. In response to Mr. Barron's concerns, I just wanted to confirm with you, Mr. Botzaras, we talked a little bit about this at the work session, but for anyone who hasn't heard that, this bill doesn't make substantive changes to existing law. Is that fair?
Yeah. It does make substantive changes to existing law, but it codifies what has already been interpreted by the commission.
Okay, thank you, that's a much better way to put it. So, it's codifying what has already been the opinion of the Ethics Commission.
Correct.
Okay, so it's, I think we called it sort of a form over function. Now, everything is in one place. It's easily, you know, easy to be found as opposed to trying to go through old ethics opinions and things like that to piece together the position of the Ethics Commission.
That's correct. It does make it a little clearer and easier to follow as far as the reading of the law goes, and it incorporates previous opinions into the law. Those opinions, of course, are subject to change with every commission, so it's going to codify those opinions.
Okay, so as it might pertain to external employment, there is no change in the Ethics Commission's position? This is just making it crystal clear?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, and the Ethics Commission supports this?
The Ethics Commission does, and the State Ethics Commission supports it as well.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the administration, you stated that the administration was neutral, but then shared your concerns. Are those the same concerns of the county executive?
Yeah, I think I was speaking for the administration, just, I think it's important, we think it's important for the council to have a range of expertise, and, yeah.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Botzaras, does this bill, or I guess other ethics opinions, but really, we're just dealing with the ones in this bill, does this foreclose a council member from having outside employment?
Absolutely not.
Okay. This simply deals with what they can or cannot vote on as it pertains to their outside employment and how what they're voting on may impact their outside employment, as I understand it?
Correct.
Okay. So, in fact, we can still, as Mr. Barron noted and as the administration is worried about, have folks from all different career paths, we can still have them on the council. We're not saying they're not allowed to be here. Am I right?
That's correct.
Okay. We're simply talking with this bill about if one is on the council and has outside employment, and something comes before the council that may impact you differently because of your outside employment than the average citizen or the normal person that we're representing, at that point, you may have a conflict of interest, and you may not be able to vote on something that could potentially enrich yourself. Am I, am I getting that right?
That's the general concept of conflict of interest law, yes.
Perfect, okay. So, in terms of the administration's position, where there are these concerns about not having people from a wide variety of career fields, they're sort of unfounded because this does nothing to prevent that, does it?
No, it does not. It subjects every council member and every career field to the same guidelines of the conflict of interest laws that have been in place for some time. It just makes them a little easier to understand, and incorporates certain opinions that have already been given by the commission.
All right, well, I won't ask you to answer this, but I'll just say for my colleagues' benefit, I think this does exactly what we were elected to do, which is increases openness and transparency in government, particularly as it pertains to a citizen can now read, as opposed to having to read five, or 10, or 15 different ethics opinions, they can read the law, and they're able to quickly grasp what we can and cannot do up here as a body. Thank you.
So, I do have a concern that takes, on page 4 of the bill, lines 8 and 9, they do, it does go beyond just codifying opinions that have been rendered over the years. It does add the employer of a county council member's immediate family. So, that is bringing in an addition that I believe could be potentially overbroad as, and extends conflict of interest beyond what is currently in the code.
It may extend it what's beyond in the code, but it does not extend it what's in the opinions that have been written under the code.
And I understand that, but when we, at the work session, you were very, very specific to tell me that each individual situation is unique. And I feel like if we start to get drilled down and get more and more specific on conflict of interest, it's going to deter council members from seeking an Ethics Commission opinion. Isn't that why we have an Ethics Commission?
To seek opinions.
To seek opinions.
Certainly. I think it would do the opposite. I think it would encourage them to seek more opinions if they were unclear or if the law stated something that they were concerned about.
But we're never going to be able to drill down on every unique situation of a council member's immediate family members.
Madam Chair, that's the nature of the law, the nature of ethics.
That's right.
And the nature of why we have a commission that gives its opinion, and why it's seven members whose opinions can change over time, so.
Right. Thank you. Ms. Lacy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Botzaras, do you recall when I gave you a call back in September concerning the potential appearance of a, of a conflict of interest with my employer?
Generally, yes, ma'am.
So, it's out in the open, it's public knowledge and information, which is why I'm happy to talk about it here. You and I had one telephone call in which you advised me to seek an opinion because my prior outside employer, which was previously my primary employer before I became a council member, had published a marketing piece that tended to opine that the Forest Conservation Act, or bill, that was then pending before the council, would create the possibility of a potential appearance of conflict of interest. So, you said I should seek that opinion from the commission. And I thought it through carefully. I considered whether I wanted to take that course of action as you advised. And I thought, it was pretty clear, at least to me anyway, and I've since gotten feedback from lots of other people confirming this, that I have the capacity to determine what would be an ethical course of action, having sought advice and thought it through for myself, knowing my situation, that if I made a decision to, say, stay in that job and then continue to participate in any legislative action on that particular bill, that I would need to disclose my affiliation with that employer. I might need to recuse myself at some point, but I didn't agree that that was even necessary for what we're talking about. The possibility of a potential appearance is so ephemeral. And yet, it was a very unique situation on which what I needed was timely advice to be able to kind of talk through how it might play out, depending on what I chose to do. And I chose in that, in that moment, I knew with crystal clarity that the best course for me to take that would be both ethical, beyond any possible reproach, and would also allow me to continue on as a council member without any possible questions concerning my commitment to serving with integrity, was to resign from my job at the law firm. And I did that, that very day.
All right, recall.
And I've reviewed this legislation very, very carefully, and I can't help but think about my particular situation. And I think about it at the work session and the questions that you were asked there. And I also understand the idea of a, it's appealing to think of codifying opinions so that the rules are there and sort of one place for people to read. But I think it's, I think the way that the bill has now been discussed actually insults the intelligence and the integrity of the citizens of Anne Rundle County who vote for us and who are entrusted with the right to use their vote. Hopefully, they're informed. But that is their duty, and they can judge for themselves, just like we've long relied on Marylanders and the American people to be able to use their judgment. So, I think it's dangerous to actually, to codify the results of certain opinions over time, where just because they, you think, you know, the outcome might be of the same ethics, and conflicts of interest are an extremely complex, nuanced subject that will still require individual analysis. And I think if we hew to the impulse to codify these particular provisions, which I don't agree are any easier to read than an ethics opinion, and actually maybe less so because they are, they are severed from the factual situation that's presented with the opinion, I think the net result is bad policy that will actually discourage people from, from even running for office. It's already hard enough as it is, and it's hard enough not making a salary that actually could support my family by myself. And I just don't, I just don't think this is the kind of precedent that we should be setting for this council or future councils. So, I'm going to be voting against this bill.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, just that I understand this, this bill, as we've clarified, indicates that this is nothing more than a recitation of the ethics law to date. It's been considered that way and approved by the County Ethics Commission. It's been considered that way and approved by the State Ethics Commission. With that, I guess what I'm going to ask is, Mr. Botzaras, as sort of the ethics expert, if you will, being the executive director of the commission, do you see any danger in codifying these ethics opinions into this bill?
That's a rather broad question, Mr. Volkey.
I'm giving you some leeway.
I'd, I'd rather not answer that question.
Okay.
When you mention that there's any dangers in taking certain steps or actions. Anytime you codify an opinion, the opinion is not going to be able to...
Change as easily.
Change as easily.
Right, right.
If that's your intent and desire, then I think you've accomplished that purpose. And the commission believes that's an appropriate intent and purpose, and the state commission agreed that it's an appropriate intent and purpose.
Okay.
But it's a question for the council whether you want to adopt that.
And I'll follow this up by, the things that are being codified, the intent and purpose of codifying this, is this sort of a one-off ethics opinion that was grabbed from over here and pulled in to try to get into this bill?
No, it's a history of opinions that have gone on for a number of years.
Okay, so this is a relatively consistent pattern of question, factual scenarios coming in, ethics opinion has been issued, and this is consistent with the history of those ethics opinions?
Yes, but each fact and circumstance is a little different.
Yeah.
You never know what a final opinion will be.
Understood.
But you're correct.
And with this, so let me ask you about the history for a second. Have there been council members who have served on this council that you're aware of who have, because of spousal employment, been forced to not participate in certain votes?
There have.
Okay. And what has the Ethics Commission's opinion been in those matters?
You're asking me to, generally, they recommend recusal in those matters when there's a direct and personal interest involved.
Okay.
That gets back to the basic general conflict of interest.
All right.
Theory.
I don't see any other comments from my colleagues. We will now open the public hearing. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. We don't have any signups. I see someone coming forward, so.
Thank you, Ms. Leahy.
Good evening, Amy Leahy. And I'm really surprised you have no signups for this. So, my, I have a couple of statements to make. Number one, I know that when Councilman Kathy Vitale was on the county council for almost 12 years, she recused herself from any votes that, that affected the Fire Department because her husband was an employee of the Fire Department. So, I do know that this has happened in the past. I am very sorry that Ms. Lacy decided that she had to leave her job rather than not vote on the Forest Conservation Bill, which could have been a choice of hers. And I believe that as a, as a member of the county council, and I'm just going to put it right out there, you have a Board of Education member who votes on the Board of Education budget. She is directly being impacted financially when she votes on Board of Education budget, which it's over 50 percent of the county budget. To me, that is a conflict, and I believe that in a case of, in her case, she definitely should be recusing herself from the vote on the county budget. So, I see no problem with this bill. I know as a former county employee, there were times when I had to get an opinion from the Ethics Commission, just as a county employee. I do not see why the county council would be any different. So, I vote, I, I... So I vote, I request that you vote in favor of this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. The public hearing on Bill Number 8619 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 8619.
Bill Number 8619, An Ordnance Concerning Public Ethics Conflict of Interest.
Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 8619.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Nay.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, two in the negative, two recusals. Bill Number 8619 is defeated.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 8719.
Bill Number 8719, An Ordinance Concerning Licenses, Multiple Dwellings, and Rooming Houses.
This was introduced by Mr. Puski.
Yes, Ms. Schewitt isn't here, but I want to make very clear, we've had a lot of discussion about short-term rentals. Will they're not identified in our code? So essentially, this kind of assists to take, talk about multiple dwellings, rooming houses, and speaking with her, this is just clarifying language of law as discussed at the work session. And that's really all I have to add, is just adding language to the code.
Thank you. Administration?
Good evening again. Pete Barron with the administration, joining me from Office of Planning and Zoning, Ms. Say, from IMP, Mr. Bryant, Mr. Deck, and from Law, Ms. Kenny. I believe there's a couple of bills this evening dealing with this issue. I'll just sort of echo the councilman from District Four's comments. The administration has no concerns with this bill, supports the bill.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Ms. Hare?
Thanks. I'm just trying to, so, the multiple dwelling and rooming house, those are supposed to affect Bill 8819 and 8919 that follow it? Is that what you're saying, Mr. Barron?
Well, I believe, and I'll defer to the better attorneys at the table, but as I understand it, this bill is required to clean up our code, to address changes that will be coming in future bills. But I don't believe, the administration does not believe, that this bill cannot stand on its own. So we can make this change, and it's still fine policy. And I'll defer to folks at the table if you want to add, particularly Ms. Kenny.
Sure. Kelly County Supervisor and County Attorney. This bill, in my opinion, doesn't really have any effect on 88 or 8919.
Right, okay.
This is really more of a cleanup bill. In the current section of the code, 1110-101, it actually refers to multiple dwelling and rooming house as having a definition in a section of the code that does not have those definitions. And it's been that way for quite some time. I believe it's back when the property maintenance code was adopted in 2006. So this change in the bill, as far as the definitions goes, actually puts in the definitions that are in the property maintenance code for multiple dwelling and for rooming house. Because if you look at the cross-reference in the code, it leads you nowhere. So that, it really just cleans up those definitions.
Okay, but Mr. Barron said this is going to affect future bills that we haven't seen yet. And I guess my only concern is that I have a hard time evaluating the definition of something that may pertain to a bill we haven't seen yet.
Well, I defer to better attorneys than I.
I mean, do we know what, do we have the follow-on bills that this will affect?
No, I'm not aware of any follow-on bills. I think there, I think that the term multiple dwelling may be used in the other bills, but I don't think there's any follow-on bills that I know of.
Okay.
And the other bills, I mean, 8819, I think may use the term multiple dwelling.
Okay, I didn't see it in there, but that, okay. But, Mr. Barron, you mentioned follow-on bills. Are there follow-on bills?
I was referring to the two bills coming up next. I was under the impression that this bill was a prerequisite for the others, and it seems like I may have taken cleanup to be a little bit more than it did. So I apologize.
Okay, so does, okay. All right. So does this have to do, do adding these definitions change anything else about the way we currently interpret the other sections of the codes where it's referenced?
No, in fact, these definitions here are the exact definitions that are in the property maintenance code.
Okay.
Which are the multiple dwellings and the rooming houses that are currently licensed by licensing. They've always licensed those things as if they were as defined in the property maintenance code, so it just fixes the cross-reference.
Okay, thank you, that's helpful.
Mr. Puski.
Oh, I'm good, I'm ready to go.
Oh, Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just savoring for a moment that we're defining something in the code. It's like a sweet moment for me, I like this. I did want to ask, so, I think there was an indication that these definitions are not in the code already. I was looking at 181101442, it looks like dwelling multifamily is already actually defined there. And then I also looked at the same section, 181101108, which already defines rooming house. Those are different definitions now. So what do we do in the code if we've got two different definitions for the same thing?
Well, so I'll address, there's a couple of different questions compounded in there. You're correct, rooming house is defined in 181101. The definitions are slightly different.
Yeah, they're similar, but not exactly the same.
Right. And, you know, in 181101, that is the zoning code, so that is what zoning would look at as far as whether a rooming house is an allowable use in a certain zone or not. The definition of rooming house that's in this bill, which is in the property maintenance code, is already what is licensed by the Department of Inspections and Permits, the Division of Licensing. So they have very few rooming houses that are licensed. So there are, so the definition between those is a little bit different. Now, this definition here in Article 11 would be the one that prevails when you are
In Article 11?
Licensing something, right.
Okay.
Because if you have, if two terms are defined, if one's defined in the article that you're looking at, then that's the
Specific over the general.
That's the definition that you would use.
Gotcha, yeah.
And then with regard to the multifamily dwelling definition in the zoning code, that also is a little bit of a nuanced difference. In the zoning code, there's all different types of dwelling, single-family, multifamily, duplex, detached. All those have different definitions. And all those different types of dwelling uses are allowed in different zones under the zoning code. So a multifamily dwelling in the zoning code is a three-unit dwelling? Three-unit dwelling. And so those are only allowed in certain zones, whereas for licensing purposes, a multiple dwelling, which is a different term, is a structure that has more than two dwelling units, and those, that's what's licensed by licensing. So if you're looking for zoning, zoning would determine how many units you have and what type of multiple dwelling it is, and whether that, you know, that definition is allowed under the zoning code. This is just for licensing purposes.
Okay. And that's sort of the definitional piece of the bill, which I think is how this was pitched, is this is a definitional component, we need this for future things. I guess my question, under 1110105, it looks like instead of referencing this title, you're now saying reference to Article 15 Title IV of the code, which is a specific reference then over to the International Property Maintenance Code in 154201. Is that already a requirement that landlords comply with the IPMC? Or is this adding that requirement?
No, that
It's already a requirement.
It's already required. This is actually a carryover from the, what I explained to Councilwoman Hare, that when the property maintenance code was adopted back in 2006.
Yeah.
Nobody ever looked at the licensing code that kind of referenced the property maintenance code. This licensing scheme was actually in that same article
So this is a cleanup, another cleanup.
With the property maintenance code, so, but nobody ever cleaned up those references. So it just basically fixes those references, but it's referring to the same exact thing.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Seeing no other questions from my colleagues, we will now open the public hearing. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. I do not have anyone signed up. I do see some movement in the audience.
Madam Chairman Julie Johnson, PO 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. I have not done my homework adequately, and I remain very confused. Excuse me. In my neighborhood, we have two homes that are being, that have been divided into apartments. They're zoned R5. That's single-family dwelling. Some of us are sort of shaking our heads, saying, wait a second, how can you have two dwelling units where it is zoned R5 and it's only supposed to be one? And the answer is, I don't know. But I have concerns about this bill and how this bill is going to impact dealing with these real estate investors. It feels worse than a head cold to me. But that was the doctor's diagnosis. I'm sorry. At any rate, I request that you consider that because people can make more money with more rentals, or there are more units, you want to be looking carefully at how this can be misused and totally do drastic damage to the zoning scheme. It was carefully developed and long fought over in order to preserve our communities. I have to close, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Puski. The public hearing on Bill Number 8719 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 8719.
Bill Number 8719, An Ordinance Concerning Licenses, Multiple Dwellings, and Rooming Houses.
Is there any further discussion? Mr. Puski?
Nope.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 8719.
Mr. Puski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Sixty in the affirmative, one in the negative. Bill Number 8719 is passed.
We will be holding a joint public hearing for Bill Number 8819 and Bill Number 8919. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of Bill Number 8819 and Bill Number 8919.
Bill Number 8819, An Ordinance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget, User Occupancy Tax, Tragic Lodging, Short-Term Rentals. Bill Number 8919, An Ordinance Concerning Licenses and Registrations, Zoning, Short-Term Residential Rentals.
Thank you. This is Ms. Rodvian's bill? Or these are?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This pair of bills is really intended to update our code to reflect changes in the lodging and tourism industry that have come into play in the past decade or so, that we've had with the advent of person-to-person short-term rentals through platforms such as Airbnb and VRBO. 8819 updates some language to add a definition of short-term rentals, levels, the playing field, so that revenue provisions apply to all types of lodging, including hotels, bed and breakfast, and short-term rentals. And it creates a process for collecting revenue. 8919 requires short-term rentals to register and pay a registration fee with our Department of Inspections and Permits. And it includes, it expands the types of homes that would be included to, regardless of their size, or regardless of the number of bedrooms. It stipulates that property owners should not operate more than two such properties. During our work session last week, we've already identified a number of ways that we're hoping to tweak this bill. My goal, as the sponsor of both of these, is to make these operate as smoothly as possible for all the players involved. And so I anticipate there will be amendments, and I look forward, I appreciate everyone that took the time to come and testify tonight to make sure that we get this right and we make this a workable bill. So I will be listening very intently to the comments that come from administration, as well as the public, on this bill.
Mr. Barron, your comments from the administration?
Sure, happy to, for the record, Pete Barron with the administration. I have a big crew with me, so let me introduce them. Mr. Beecham from Budget, Ms. Good, Ms. McQuade from Finance, Ms. Say from OPZ, Ms. Kenny from Law, and in the audience, we couldn't fit everybody at the table, Mr. Bryant, Mr. Deck from IMP. And so if we have specific IMP questions, I will be waving them up. First, I just want to make a couple of general comments that I think apply to both of these pieces of legislation. I want to thank the sponsor for the open line of communication that we have had since the bills were introduced. We have had some concerns with some of the pieces of the bill, but are strongly in favor of the concept for both of these pieces of legislation. The market moves fast, and it's important that we keep our law, both the ability to collect the revenue, keep a competitive, equal footing for hotels and what these facilities are, short-term rentals. I think I made the comment at the work session that just a few years ago, nobody knew what an Airbnb was. They hadn't made the app yet. There are a number of other different services that also provide this. So it's important that we keep both our ability to collect the revenue from this and apply the appropriate regulatory scheme to keep both our communities safe and healthy and the visitors to our county, who generally are coming from out of county to enjoy all sorts of things, from the city of Annapolis, where this issue is particularly felt, in the historic district, to other communities that have great waterfront or other amenities that are seeing these show up, to folks around some job sites where we see short-term contractual workers come in to work, for example, at the fort, and maybe well-served by the market to prefer, rather than a hotel, the comforts of a home. So we want to make sure that we get this right, and I appreciate the discussions. I think how it might be best to let this go is, the folks, the team here at the table are happy to answer any questions. But we expect, as Councilwoman Rodvian suggested, there are to-be amendments. We stand ready to discuss and work through those over the coming days and weeks. And into the new year. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from my colleagues? Ms. Hare?
Just one, thank you, Madam Chairman, Chairwoman, sorry. At the work session, we had asked about some data on surrounding jurisdictions and whether the revenue they receive from these taxes is sufficient to support the additional personnel required to administer it. Are you all, have you been able to gather that? Are you still working on it?
I defer to our budget experts. Do you have anything?
Jim Beecham, Budget Officer, we have not done any research on adjoining or proximate jurisdictions to compare their rates. We have worked with the Office of the Auditor and concur with her assumptions and calculations as shown in the blue letter.
Okay, I'm going to ask again if we can get that information from neighboring jurisdictions and whether it's revenue positive or negative for the cost to administer the tax versus what gets brought in, if we can find them. Thanks.
Seeing no other comments from my colleagues, we will now open the joint public hearing. This is your opportunity to speak on both bills. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. I do have a list. Mr. Ross Arnett, Chris LeDoe, Mr. Jason Brand, Teresa Sutherland, Amy Rohr, and Marty Etzel. We'll start there. Oh, excuse me, Alderman Ross Arnett, excuse me, sir. Welcome.
Thank you. Shall I start?
Are we ready? State your name, please.
Ross Arnett, 529 Sixth Street, Annapolis, Maryland, Alderman, Ward Eight, testifying in support of both of these bills. This is a topical item in Annapolis, has been This is a topical item in Annapolis, has been for several months, actually several years now. With regard to 8819, I certainly agree with the changes. I like the idea of changing it to Use or Occupancy Tax. Of course, you need to add short-term rentals into the language, and changing the coverage to include all of them, not just units that have three bedrooms or more, is very important, particularly since most of our units are less than three bedrooms in the city. So, and I do find this to be very consistent, a strong parallel with what we're attempting to do in the city. Likewise, with 8819, again, the parallel with the city is quite satisfying. In the city, we've been trying to make our code legal, enforceable, protect public safety, and find a balance between all interests, which includes residences, neighborhoods, but also businesses, whether they're home-sharing businesses or more generally the hospitality industry. So, again, I find both of these bills, but particularly the latter, meet those objectives that we're trying to attain in the city, and certainly would urge you to vote in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Ledoux, am I saying that right?
Yes, thank you. Chris Ledoux, 215 Severn Avenue in Eastport in the city of Annapolis. I'm a host of a short-term residential rental in the city, and prior to that, I was a host of my home in the county, long before there were hosting platforms. So I'm very well familiar with doing this both in the county and in the city. I want to compliment you on 8919. While I understand tonight that there will be some additional amendments, I think the bill reflects a well-balanced approach, balancing the equities of the stakeholders. It looks like you're trying to find that right, that right balance without picking one side or the other. It's been my experience in working through the city process that no one's side on either side of the debate is totally right, and no one's side is totally wrong, and this bill is a good start at that balance. 8919, from my perspective, introduces important controls and safeguards that are fair, and it does not impose any unduly or onerous compliance requirements. But I'm primarily here to strongly support 8819. I support the bill's application to all short-term rentals and all lodging providers, regardless of the number of bedrooms. The bill facilitates a potential significant source of pass-through revenue, sparing our taxpayers by putting the tax on visitors who are bringing additional costs to our county and our city. And it facilitates this important revenue source, both the county and the city, especially true to the city who has some very significant infrastructure projects ahead. Finally, I would ask that the administration continue the cooperative arrangement that the county has had with the city as collecting agent under subsection K. Thank you for the opportunity to be heard, and thank you for listening. Happy holidays.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jason Brand?
I echo happy holidays as well. Jason Brand, Senior Vice President of Government Affairs for Anne Arundel County Association of Realtors. On behalf of the association, I'm here to thank the council for your work on Bill 8919 and to express our support with a couple of amendments. First, short-term residential rental is defined as no more than 120 consecutive days. This definition could end up affecting many living arrangements that are based on month-to-month tenancies, such as rooms at senior living facilities, drug treatment or halfway houses, or roommate situations. So we would recommend amending the definition to no more than 28 days, or alternatively, modifying the definition of short-term residential rental or transient guests so that it's clear the intent of the legislation is to govern transients, not residents in a month-to-month situation. Second, the bill only allows individuals to apply for a license and prohibits LLCs, corporations, or other business entities from applying. However, in some cases, individuals choose to purchase and own real property in an LLC for privacy, safety, or to limit their personal liability. For example, if you own your residence in your own name, as most people do, then someone who's injured on your property can sue you directly. However, if you own your home in an LLC, the lawsuit can only name the LLC. There are also financial or estate planning reasons why someone would want to use an LLC or partnership to purchase a home. Allowing only individuals to apply for a license forces homeowners to choose between renting out their property on a short-term basis and their personal privacy, safety, and financial well-being. Third, there's a $200 a year registration fee charged as a $400 fee for two years. Our members have questioned the amount of these registration fees, considering the additional revenue that's expected to be brought in as use or occupancy taxes. And finally, our members question the limit of two licenses that can be obtained by an individual, and believe that for fairness, if there's individuals in the county who currently own more than two short-term residential rentals, it'd be reasonable to grandfather them in. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Sutherland?
Good evening. I'm Teresa Sutherland, the City Manager for the city of Annapolis. I am here to speak on behalf of Mayor Gavin Buckley, who was here earlier but had to leave for another engagement. I am not here to speak on behalf of the City Council, as I do not have the authority to do so. The city's authority to collect hotel tax comes from Article IV of the County Code. State law does not allow the city to impose its own hotel tax, set its own hotel tax rate, or decide on whom to impose the hotel tax. We can do only what your code allows with respect to hotel tax. We thank Councilwoman Rodvian for introducing this important piece of legislation. Those seeking lodging today have a plethora of options, hotels, motels, bed-and-breakfast establishments, and short-term rentals. It simply makes sense to change the name of the tax to Use or Occupancy Tax. Currently, when it comes to bed-and-breakfast homes, rooming, or guest houses, or tourist homes, the tax applies only to those with three bedrooms or more. We support eliminating this three-bedroom provision to allow the collection of tax on all facilities rented for occupancy by the transient public, regardless of the number of bedrooms. We believe that it is fair and equitable to do so. Removing the three-bedroom provision will also allow the city to establish an inventory of short-term rentals, particularly those listed on the hosting platforms, so we, the city, can enforce our inspection and licensing provisions and collect the taxes due. Thank you, Councilwoman Rodvian, for sponsoring Bill 8819, and we ask the entire City Council to vote in favor of it.
County Council.
County Council. I finally started saying City Council instead of County Council, and now I got it wrong. Sorry.
Thank you. Ms. Rohr?
Madam Chair, council members, good evening. My name is Amy Rohr, here on behalf of the Maryland Hotel Lodging Association. I also submitted written testimony indicating support with amendments for this bill. There are two areas where we are asking for your consideration. Before I go into that, I want to be very clear that we are not opposed to home sharing, but we do have concerns with commercial operators, LLCs, who are operating full-time multiple units, just like a hotel, in residential neighborhoods without regulation. To ensure this activity is truly home-sharing, we encourage you to consider a primary residence requirement. This requirement has passed in Montgomery County, Prince George's County, and also Baltimore City, with no legal challenges here in Maryland. The second area we'd like for you to consider is a tweak to clarifying how the hotel tax would be remitted. When it comes to state sales tax, platforms have to collect the tax and also remit it on behalf of hosts. And in looking at the two bills together, it appears that one may contradict the other. We would encourage you to adopt the same model as the state. We also applaud you for the platform accountability and data transparency that is in this bill. The platforms currently facilitate rentals with no regard for the underlying legality of the unit, and they make money on every transaction. We have learned that they have to be compelled to be a good partner when it comes to enforcement, and it's critical to maintain that language in this bill in order to enforce whatever regulations you ultimately pass. That concludes my comments for MHLA, but I am also a constituent of District Five, residing at 1251 Dogwood Road. And I also, in that role, encourage you to look at the primary residence requirement. I have been in countless hearings, hearing the stories about someone who ends up living next door to what is essentially a hotel in their neighborhood, and I hope to not be the next one. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Etzel?
Hello, County Council. My name is Marty Etzel. I live a few blocks away on 26 Randall Street. My wife, Carmela, own and operate the Flag House Inn Bed and Breakfast in downtown Annapolis. Yes, they're still our bed, bed and breakfast. We're the artifact of the 90s. We were the Airbnbs of the 90s, and we live under a lot of regulation and tax collection. I've testified at the state level the last two years, around collection of state tax by short-term rentals, and at the city of Annapolis around the pending regulation. So now I've achieved the trifecta in testifying at all local levels of government. We're in favor of 8819 regulation as proposed in regards to clean up the language for collection of 7% county hotel tax. Further, it creates a level playing field for all short-term rentals for a regulatory framework. Our Airbnb has many city, state, and county regulations to adhere, and we must collect a total of 13% state sales tax and local hotel tax. However, the short-term rentals collected zero until recently, when they were forced to collect state sales tax and regulation effective July 1st. But until this bill, the local 7% hotel tax is not collected by the whole house and three-bedroom or less rentals. To be clear, for any of you thinking this is a new tax, it's not a new tax. This is collecting a tax that you're already entitled to collect, only a technicality in the current regulations prevent this. I believe your constituents would want you to know that the county is collecting a tax to which you're, the cities or the county is already entitled to collect. So I won't comment in detail on the rest of the proposed regulation, as it doesn't directly affect this. We mainly compete against all types of lodging within the city, hotels, Airbnbs, and everybody else. But overall, the regulation does seem fairly written. I hope you're able to pass the bill so the county and Annapolis can get the revenues to which they're already entitled. Thank you.
Thank you. This panel is dismissed. We do have one more individual signed up. Ms. Christina Cole? Go ahead.
My name is Christina Cole. I live at 55 East Street here in Annapolis. First, I would like to thank you for your efforts to sensibly regulate short-term rentals, and I express my general support for both bills. I support 8919's stipulation that a host must be an actual person and not a corporation, LLC, or other entity. I believe this provision will lead to increased transparency for enforcement and for inventorying purposes. However, I would like to strongly encourage an amendment to incorporate a primary residency requirement, which is a best practice that has already been implemented by Montgomery County, Prince George's County, and Baltimore City. A two-dwelling limit on registrations is a very good start, but only a primary residency requirement can provide a legal and nondiscriminatory way to manage the growth and density of short-term rentals, while protecting neighborhood integrity, housing affordability, and residents' quality of life from commercial encroachment. I am repeating this request to you, as I have made the same request to the Annapolis City Council, and I ask you for this consideration as a resident of Annapolis' historic district, where one in five homes between Main Street and St. John's College is already a full-time de facto hotel with no owner occupant. From an enforcement and taxation perspective, I fully support 8919's strong platform accountability language, as this language will guarantee a partnership between the county and the various platforms for compliance. When combined with the proposed changes to the county's occupancy tax applicability, this one sure consistent, and across-the-board collection of remittance of fees. And I encourage you to follow the previous panel's comments to make sure that this is effectively a pass-through tax that the hosts themselves don't need to handle, it just goes straight through, much in the same way that the state's sales tax collection currently does. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes, folks that have signed up. I see two people have come forward who clearly wish to speak. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak on these bills? Go ahead, please state your name. Ms. Johnson?
Go ahead.
Ms. Johnson?
Okay. Julia Johnson, PO Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. My comments relate to the fact that there is a lot of concern in my neighborhood as they watch what's happened in the city of Annapolis. You've had people who are more concise than I am, but essentially, you wind up living in your neighborhood you've lived in for years, and suddenly you're now surrounded by short-term rentals, which are basically, you know, overnight facilities, hotels, motels, or what have you. And what happens to the sense of community? Where's your real neighbor? How do we help one another? Who gives a darn about, you know, the elderly lady down the street, or the young family with a young child who has special needs? You know, those things vaporize in a profitable, commercially successful kind of, you know, setting. So I question whether, you know, you have enough safeguards to preserve existing communities. I also question whether you're looking at affordable housing, because after all, I mean, people have told me, me, just, you know, put your properties into short-term rentals, and you can be pulling in the dough and sitting in Fat City. So who's going to provide affordable housing for the thousands of people who need affordable housing? And I'm not criticizing your bill at all. You've worked hard on this, and I appreciate the good things that you've done. I do think the, you know, the requirement to have a residential owner, or the, you know, primary residence requirement is important, but I'm losing it again. I thank you for the opportunity to testify, and happy holidays of all kinds.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Sir, please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. My name is William Small at 702 Melrose Street in Annapolis, Maryland, and I am a short-term rental owner. I've been operating a property on Burnside Street, it's actually Severn and Burnside, for five years now, and it's a two-bedroom, it's a great little place. Very happy with the neighbors, the neighbors are very happy with us, and we consider the fairness of the tax application to be the most important need that is lacking in the city and county level. We agree that the taxes should be paid by the customer. The customer should see the same tax that they are paying at the hotel, which is on their invoice, and just be able to compare that. And that we also feel that the tax should go straight to the comptroller or the controller of the money, so that the property owner doesn't have to handle the money. These rentals oftentimes are really not as profitable as people have made it sound. I mean, frankly, I was operating a long-term rental before I did the short-term, and I'm really doing no better. So it's just what I believe is good for the city is to make these accommodations where someone can bring a dog, and I can play host. It's nice to welcome people into the town, and I think it's sweet. And I have a staff person that I've hired, and she loves it. We both take great care to be good hosts. So that's what it's about for us, and I think that that's what it's about for a lot of other people, not the gross profit that people are sort of maligning that is somehow, like, sure, there's going to be bad hosts, but I'm going to move on from that because my time is low. I want to encourage you to offer affidavit inspections or no inspection at all, and consider waiving the fee for roommate-only rentals. Like, when I'm renting, only a room in my house.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Madam, oh, hold on. Is there anyone else who did not sign up who wishes to speak? Thank you. The joint public hearing on Bill Number 8819 and Bill Number 8919 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 8819.
Bill Number 8819, An Ordnance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget, Use or Occupancy Tax, Transient Lodging, Short-Term Rentals.
Is there any further discussion? Ms. Rodvian?
If there's no further discussion among my colleagues, oh, thank you, Madam Chair, I would like to move to hold the vote on this, pending further amendments.
Second?
Oh, till January 6th is our next meeting?
Yes.
Thank you.
We have a motion that's been made and seconded.
Motion is to...
Hold the vote until January 6, 2020.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to hold the vote on Bill Number 8819 to January 6 is adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 8919.
Bill Number 8919, An Ordnance Concerning Licenses and Registrations, Zoning, Short-Term Residential Rentals.
We have a motion to...
Well, we're doing...
Point of order.
Yes. We called 8819 for vote and voted to hold the vote. Now we're calling 8919, and I believe there's another motion for this bill to hold the vote.
There will be, there now is. I moved to hold the vote on 8919. I move to hold the vote on 8919 until our January 6, 2020, meeting.
Second.
Okay. Second, thank you. Madam Secretary, may I please, can we call the roll on the motion to hold the vote on 8919 until the January 6, 2020, meeting?
Yes. Ms. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none of the negative. The motion to hold the vote on Bill Number 8919 to January 6 is adopted.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 9019.
Bill Number 9019, An Ordnance Concerning Public Works, Utilities: Partial Deferral of Residential Wastewater System Connection Charges and Assessments.
This is Ms. Hare and Ms. Lacy's bill. Who chooses to speak? Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. So this bill sort of developed out of a bit of a passion project for me. It is a bill that I believe sort of touches on an environment, public health, and quality of life issue. We talked a good deal about this at the work session, so I will try and keep this fairly brief. But essentially, during the campaign, Edgewater Beach, which is in District 7, it came to my attention that they can't drink their well water in some instances because the wells are contaminated with some of the effluent from the septic systems. And I did a little digging after the campaign and discovered that there are, in fact, a number of these communities in the county. The 2017 wastewater master plan, or sewer master plan, identifies 33 of these neighborhoods that suffer from sort of high nutrient pollutant loads coming from septic systems that are failing or otherwise problematic. And in fact, it looks like this was not a unique or a new thing. I think the 2013 master plan may have also identified this. This has sort of been in the works for a really long time. So this is a big environmental impact and also a public health impact in that it's contaminating people's drinking waters, but is also polluting the bay with a high nutrient load. I believe Mr. Johnson has some of the numbers on the average effluent pollutant that comes out of a septic system versus those that come out of a wastewater treatment plant, so I'll let him speak to those afterwards. One potential solution to this is for people to convert, obviously, their existing failing septic system or problematic septic system to public sewer. There is currently already a voluntary way to do this in the code. It is a petition project. We've seen, I believe, one of those here at the council so far. It was for Heritage Harbor in the last budget year. Unfortunately, in many instances, it's prohibitively expensive. In many cases, the cost to extend sewer could be $65,000 per home, maybe more. That cost is borne entirely by the homeowner, and the petition process requires that you get 50% of the vote plus one in your community to ask someone to essentially pay an additional mortgage payment every year for 30 years to have public sewer can be daunting. And so places like Edgewater Beach have been struggling since the 1960s, I believe, in Edgewater Beach's case, to get a valid petition process, a valid petition through their community that would allow them to convert to existing sewer. And there is a sewer line that runs directly down Route 2, so in Edgewater Beach's situation in particular, it is, I mean, it is right there, and it's still a struggle because it's so expensive. So we've been actually in work groups since July, meaning to evaluate fiscal policy, I'm sorry, fiscal implications and policy implications of what we might be able to do to sort of incentivize this voluntary process so that homeowners who want to connect their existing homes have that option and that it is financially feasible for them. The first idea that we came up with is this deferral piece. It's Bill Number 9019, and it would allow people who are in one of these 33 communities or in the critical area or included in a project that encompasses one of those two areas to defer up to 50% of their cost to connect until they sell or transfer the home or 40 years later, whichever comes first. So it can drop their monthly payments for a while, and then theoretically, that may increase their home value and whatnot, may make it more feasible for them to pay a lump sum when they sell, however they choose to do it. Again, voluntary, nobody has to do this, it's an incentive. They can choose to defer less than 50% if they would like to maybe only defer 25%. That's something that they would have the option to do. Notably, the deferment process already exists in our code. We allow it for elderly or low income, and so this is not a new concept. And I believe for the elderly and low income, we actually allow 100% deferral. So we tried to go sort of even more conservative than that and really make this a tool that can be used, but not to have too great of a financial impact on the county. So there is this map actually that DPW has developed, and this gives everyone an idea. I believe the council got a copy of this map during the work session. Thank you to DPW for putting this together, that sort of shows pictorially where this could apply. I just want to touch briefly on the two concerns that I have heard in the past and make sure that everyone's aware of those. Obviously, everyone wants to know what does a project like this, or what does a program like this cost? This particular one, the deferral bill, is ultimately a net zero to the county because the county does collect all of the project money and interest at some point. It is simply a matter of when they collect it. And the work group did actually do a fiscal model for this. I believe the whole council also got that graph that shows the fiscal model. We are positive for a little bit, negative for a bit, positive, it evens out at the end. I would also know that the, all of these projects, any of these projects that come in, have to go through the budget process, so the council has the final say in terms of whether or not a project moves forward. We're still stuck with the same bond limit. All of those items still apply. So from a financial standpoint, there's a lot of checks and balances. The other concern that I've heard is what happens with infill development? Is that a problem that happens? If you're extending sewer to existing homes, does that sort of open up unfettered development? And I would suggest that the answer is no. And again, I'm going to thank DPW, they've put an enormous amount of work into this. DPW has sort of evaluated the top five projects that come back based on the pollutant level and the level of contamination, the proximity to the bay, things like that. And they've actually gone through and identified the potential infill lots that could arise from that. And again, I believe the council each got a copy of those. It looks to me, from my reading, and Mr. Phipps, you can correct me if I'm wrong, over the next five years, assuming you did one project a year, which may be very aggressive, is that we might see 100 potential lots in the worst-case scenario. A number of these lots are in the critical area, they're in the RCA, their development potential is really minimal. So I think personally, the way I look at this, the level of development that you would see, the level of new development that you would see as a result of this program is quite small. But Mr. Phipps can correct me, or Mr. Kaisigler, if I'm mistaken. Ultimately, we have a really big problem for the people who currently live in our communities in that they can't drink their water, or they are pumping out their septic systems every month, or the water that they are drinking is contaminated. And we have some pretty hefty requirements we have to meet at the state level to remove nitrogen from our waterways. This bill is the first piece of what I believe can be a comprehensive plan to help convert the failing septic systems or the problematic septic systems in our county and address both of those issues in a way that is financially responsible. So I would ask for your support on this, and I want to give a big thanks and shout-out to Councilwoman Lacy, Vice Chair Lacy, for co-sponsoring this, and if she has any further comments she'd like to address.
Ms. Lacy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did have something briefly to say, which is, one, I hope you didn't really do a little digging in these areas. And it's probably, when you say it's in the works, I just want to point out, you were a civil engineer before becoming an attorney and a councilwoman. I was a chemical engineer before becoming an attorney and a councilwoman. My job did work on water treatment and wastewater treatment, and I'm not quite sure what yours did. But this is an issue that I also learned about through the campaign process and wanted to fix, so I'm most especially grateful that you already wrote the bill. And all I had to do was add my name on it to help encourage everybody to pass the bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the administration have a response?
Absolutely. Pete Barron for the administration. With me at the table also from the administration is Mr. Johnson. From finance, Ms. McQuade. From budget, Mr. Beecham is actually in the audience, but willing to join us if needed. Mr. Phipps from DPW, Mr. Kaisigler from OPZ, and Ms. Kenny from Office of Law.
Thank you.
Yep. And so I also would like to thank the sponsor and the co-sponsor. This is an important bill. We've made a joke or two about it, but we all know what this is dealing with. It is not pretty stuff. It's important, though. This is about the environmental health of the bay and the health of our communities. Nobody should be drinking contaminated water, and we must address, not only to meet our state's TMDL, or county's TMDL rules applied by the state, but we also need to, we all want to swim in that bay, we all want to play in that bay, so we need to make sure that we are doing everything to address all forms of pollution. And Mr. Johnson, in a minute or so, will talk to the specifics about how much pollution actually does come from our septic systems. But I wanted to add a couple of quick points. We are committed to a long-term plan to comply with the state's Chesapeake Bay TMDL requirements, and that includes connecting septic systems that are subject to these kinds of operational issues. They are big contributors to pollution. Councilwoman Hare, I think, did a good job of outlining the mechanics of the bill, so I'll leave that to any questions that you may have. But I do want to point back to that map that Councilwoman Hare referred to, which was made by a GIS specialist, I confirmed. The eligibility, you have to meet certain criteria, that you're in Chesapeake Bay critical area, that you're in an outside wastewater management plant, problem area identified by the Health Department, or in an area designated in the county's master plan for water supply sewage systems as septic to sewer conversion area, or an area that is adjacent to one of the areas listed above and that's within the boundary of the wastewater extension project. So the other point I think I'll sort of make is on the fiscal impact of this. It's important that the, and this administration is committed to a stable utility rate model, and the projections out, the Septics Task Force did a lot of work to make sure that this was an affordable program that would allow us to convert these systems without jeopardizing our program. So with that, I want to turn it over to Mr. Johnson to correct anything I got wrong and add a little bit more of the context about why these systems are so important to convert.
Sure. Thank you. For the record, Matt Johnston from the administration. Yeah, I just want to echo all the thanks for all the work that went into this, many, many months of a lot of volunteers and county employees and Councilwoman Hare and her team. So thank you very much. Just to reiterate something that I said at the work session again to put this into context. Maryland Department of the Environment estimates that one of these systems, fully functioning systems, has an effluent, the amount of nitrogen coming out of it, of 40 milligrams per liter. About 80% of that in the critical area gets directly into the tidal waters. Our best-performing treatment plant last year had 1.8 milligrams per liter. So if we can connect these septic systems to the wastewater treatment plants, we're talking about a 94% reduction per system in the effluent entering our tidal waters. So that's the context there. I also want to say a little bit about how this is both an acute and a chronic problem. It's acute in that some of these can fail, and then we have a lot of nitrogen going into the bay and these tidal waters all at once. But it's also chronic, because all you have to do is pull up a map of some of these communities and see the hundreds and hundreds of dots, all of which are emitting far greater nutrients into the bay than they would be if they were going to a wastewater treatment plant. So this is a chronic problem for some of our tidal rivers, and that was pointed out, I wanted to point out to the council and to the public, our watershed protection restoration program on their website, they have watershed studies of all of our major rivers. And in the Severn, the South, and the Magathie, this was listed as the number-one nitrogen reduction strategy. These were written back in 2008 and 2009, and we haven't gotten around to doing anything about it. So the administration is really excited that we're doing this now. Thank you.
I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Phipps to talk about the technical aspects, if there's anything we missed or you think we should add.
No, I just, I think it's refreshing, Chris Phipps, Director of Public Works, I think it's refreshing to see such a commitment being placed on this because it's long been neglected, these nitrogen discharging and phosphorus is discharging into the bay. And so I think this is a great opportunity to see how we can get some synergy to get these systems connected. And it's not just for the pollutants or the nutrients that are making their way into the bay, it's back to what Councilwoman Hare was describing. And I've had, year after year after year, discussions with the Edgewater Beach community, and it has gotten increasingly frustrating for them that there isn't an option or there isn't the funding mechanisms to make it affordable. And when I think back, well, how did we get so many of our waterfront and many of the other communities connected to public sewer throughout the years? And it was because when the Clean Water Act was promulgated in the early '70s, with it came a lot of grant funding from EPA. That was also supplemented with MDE funding, up to as much as 87 and a half percent of the costs were defrayed by grant programs. So the homeowner was paying 12 and a half percent. That's gone entirely. So the entire cost and burden is on the homeowner. So anything we can do to help that, help the bay, help those individuals on failing systems, I think is the right thing to do.
Thank you. Do I have any questions, my colleagues? Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Phipps, you and I had a chance to discuss this and some of the concerns that I have, particularly the idea that anywhere septic goes, development's sure to follow almost. The idea that when you put in septic, that it can then lead to either these infill lot developments, like what Councilwoman Hare mentioned, or you can potentially have a landowner then come in and say, "My property can support higher density because I've now got septic, and that's something that changes to a certain degree what I can put there." I guess, sorry?
Sewer.
Oh, I'm sorry, I keep saying septic. I don't know why I'm saying that.
I know what you meant.
That's what I meant. Good grief. So with that, I guess my question to you is, I know that you all have done this slide presentation, which I've had a chance to look at extensively, that shows where you sort of see infill development happening. But one of the things you and I had talked about was, it's obviously prohibitive if someone were a community at the end of, let's say in my district, because I know that well, at the end of Mountain Road, to say, "We're going to run sewer all the way down to the end of Mountain Road." Obviously, to do that, very, very expensive off the bat. But if the first community that's at the end of the current sewer system tacks on, and then the next community sees that and says, "Our costs have gotten cheaper," and then they keep sort of tacking on to one another, would you agree with me that that kind of creates a model whereby sewer could get deeper into some of these areas that currently don't have it?
Well, if we examine your district and where the sewer service areas extend, they actually, it pretty much ends at Lakeshore Shopping Center, the sewer service area. So anything east of that along Mountain Road 100 is outside the sewer service area, so it would require a legislative amendment to the water and sewer master plan. So I think, you know, there's an opportunity right there to make it a legislative decision, are we going to allow the extension of sewer beyond the current service area? The examples in Ms. Hare's district are areas that are actually within the sewer service area, so they're already surrounded by sewer, it's very proximate to them. I think in your case, most of them, you get out to the Bodkin Peninsula, it's so far remote, and they're outside of the sewer service area. It would require amendment after amendment after amendment to get the sewer extended that far.
Okay. 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 Thank you.
I don't seem to have any other comments from my colleagues. We'll now open the public hearing. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. I do not have anyone signed up. We have some movement in the audience, so, sorry, guys. Please state your name and address, and you have two minutes.
Yes. My name is Sally Horner, and I live at 787 Magavista Road in Arnold. I'm speaking in support of this Bill 9019. I've been a member of the county Septic Task Force for several years, representing the Magathie and Severn Rivers, and have been a part of a discussion about the need for conversions from septics to sewer and about the high cost of such conversions. I've also spent over 30 years monitoring water quality in these rivers, as well as the South River and Western Road Rivers. In particular, I ran the fecal bacterial monitoring program known as Operation Clear Water. This program allows riverfront communities to sign up for bacterial monitoring of their beaches and marinas to determine if their waterfront is suitable for swimming or, and other recreational uses. I have seen the impacts of failing septic systems on water quality, both in regards to bacterial contamination as well as nutrient over-enrichment. And as you've just heard, even perfectly functioning systems are highly polluting in terms of nitrogen. So for these reasons, I support this bill, as it would make the cost of conversion to sewer less burdensome to some residents.
Thank you. Okay.
I'm Ann Flickston, and I am with the Growth Action Network, soon to be the former executive director, but I will be staying on the board, and so I'll hopefully see you all next year. I don't know nearly as much about it as Sally does, but I know that we've had, in my neighborhood and my area, lots of summer communities that had small lots and septic, but now they have full-time people living there, and some of their septic systems are failing. We have septic, but we have big lots in my neighborhood, and I did worry about continuing to put sewer everywhere, and how that does seem to make development come. I think we have to solve that some other way besides not using sewers, because we really need to get this, and I think it's good in this bill that you're really taking the worst things first. My neighborhood might want to be on sewer because we've waited for 40 years, we're on the river, but we don't have failing systems, as far as I know. So we've got to take the worst ones first, and hopefully, we can expand this when we figure out how we can still manage development, even though there are sewers everywhere. So I think this is a great bill, and I'm so glad to see it here, and I appreciate everybody's work on it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who did not sign up who wishes to speak? All right. The public hearing on Bill Number 9019 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 9019.
Bill Number 9019, An Ordnance Concerning Public Works, Utilities, Partial Deferral of Residential Wastewater System Connection Charges and Assessments.
Is there any further discussion? I believe there is an amendment. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 1.
Amendment Number 1. This amendment provides for a five-year termination of the provisions for partial deferral of the payment of residential wastewater connection charges and assessments.
Can I get a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Just briefly.
Mr. Volkey?
This creates a sunset provision on this program for, after five years. Effectively, the idea with this is sort of a reasonable compromise, if you will. I recognize the intent of Councilwoman Hare and Councilwoman Lacy. I understand the position of the administration and Department of Public Works and how this program, you know, should move forward. I have some concerns about what this could do to infill development, so the thought with this, let's do this program for five years, let's see how many communities sign up, how many of them are able to do it. Let's see if, the concern that I have is everywhere that you put sewer, that the development follows. If, in fact, I'm wrong and sewer is not leading to more infill development, we can go ahead, just as we did with Mr. Pruski's bill earlier this year, where we re-upped for the veterans' organizations with the connection charges that had a sunset provision. We could do the same thing, and we could reauthorize this bill, and the program could continue. If we find that it's not working as expected, then obviously, we could make some changes. But I do think this is a reasonable, a reasonable sort of way to measure the impact of this bill over time, but also to ensure that the most pressing projects, particularly the Edgewater Beach project, that I know Councilwoman Hare has in the forefront, kind of of things that need to be fixed. And there are a few others. I don't want to just single that one out there, priority list. But this will at least give us a chance to see how this program works for a period of time, and if it does, we keep going. And if it doesn't, then we look at something else. So I would ask that my colleagues support this as sort of a reasonable compromise to put this bill in a place where we can measure the impacts.
Does the administration have anything to respond?
Sure. Pete Barron for the administration, again. Administration respectfully opposes the amendment. We understand the position of the councilmen. I just want to say a couple of things. Before a project would be approved, it has to come before the council to amend the sewer map and will be included in the budget. So effectively, this bill sunsets every year until you pass the funding or the map to include it. Additionally, I do understand the concern, it's definitely one of the county exec shares, about excess development and infill development. But I want to make sure it's clear and on the record that in order to be eligible for the deferment program, you have to be, the property has to connect at the time, let me make that right, the time, the deferral is only authorized to the, is available to the owner of a property at the time the property is connected to the wastewater system. So you, if you're sitting on an empty lot and this program happens, you can't just hook up six years later and get the good deal. So want to just put that out there, and happy to add any, answer any questions, and if anybody at the table has anything they want to add to that.
I just had one little thing to add to that. Kelly County Supervising County Attorney. Not only does it only apply for owners of the property at the time, but it only applies for existing properties with existing improvements. So it would not apply to anybody who built something. They would not be able to qualify for the deferral.
Mr. Volkey?
Just want to clarify on that. They wouldn't be eligible for the deferment, but they'd still be eligible to hook up. So if the sewer line runs right in front of your property, you can still hook up there.
Oh, you could still hook up. I just wanted to clarify.
Right. You just can't defer the cost on it. Okay. Yeah, I just want to make that clear, because that's how the infill development would happen. It's not just through the deferment cost of it, it would actually be through, you know, you run past a piece of property, somebody now subdivides and says, "I'm going to take my lot and hook up to the sewer." Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I'll just respond to Councilwoman Volkey's concern. I actually agree that we could monitor the program. I don't think that's a bad thing. I think we should do that anyways. I don't think we need a sunset provision to do that. I think that over the next handful of years, we certainly should look at it, and if the program is somehow not working as intended, we absolutely should make some changes. But we can do that whether or not a sunset provision is there. So I would respectfully request that we pass the bill tonight as it's drafted. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Ms. Lacy?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I completely agree with Councilwoman Hare, and I think there are already going to be enough future layers of review. I hope eventually, this becomes a model program, even perhaps septic-to-sewer conversions. So we're going to be monitoring it anyway, and there's a sunset won't be helpful in this situation.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 1.
Mr. Pruski?
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Nay.
Ms. Hare?
Nay.
Ms. Lacy?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Two in the affirmative, five in the negative. Amendment Number 1 is defeated.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 9019.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Before I vote, I just want to say, I'm so thrilled to be voting for something that I think is so positive, is our last vote of the decade, so I happily vote aye, and I thank my colleague for bringing this legislation forward. Did I forget to say aye? Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
With that preamble from Councilwoman Rodvian, how can I say no? Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill 9019 is passed.
Is there any other business to be brought before the county council?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The county council is adjourned until January 6, 2020. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.